All right, good evening, everyone. The time is 6:02 PM. It is Tuesday, February the 7th, and I'm going to call the special city council meeting to order with the city secretary. Please call the roll.
Mitchell?
Here.
Tobias?
Here.
Heiser?
Here.
Flores Kale?
Here.
Zuniga?
Here.
Bradshaw?
Here.
Parsley?
All right, all members present, we have a quorum. Next up, citizen comments period. Is there anyone who wishes to come forward and speak on any item? Seeing none, I'm going to close citizen comments period. It's now closed. Next up, executive session. Councilor Zuniga.
Executive session pursuant to Chapter 551 Texas Government Code. The city council reserves the right to convene into executive session from time to time as deemed necessary during this meeting. The city council may convene into executive session pursuant to any lawful exception contained in Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, including any or all of the following topics, pending or contemplated litigation, or to seek the advice of city attorney and attorneys concerning legal issues pursuant to Section 551-071 Texas Government Code and Section 1.05 Texas Disciplinary Rules of Professional Conduct for the following matters. Cost number 22-0873. The state of Texas, Example R E L 1200, South Old Stagecoach Road LLC versus City of Kyle, Texas pending in the 207th Judicial District Court of Hayes County, Texas, and Cost Number 191492, 1200 South Old Stagecoach Road LLC versus City of Kyle, Texas pending in the 22nd Judiciary District Court of Hayes County. Reinvestment Zone Number 4, TERS Number 4, convene into executive session pursuant to Section 551-087 Texas Government Code to deliberate regarding the offer of economic incentives to one or more business prospects that the city seeks to have locate, stay, or expand in or near the city. Project Light Bright, take action on items discussed in executive session.
All right, good evening, everyone. I'm going to call this meeting back to order. There was no action taken during executive session. There will be no action taken now. Motion adjourned. All right, we are adjourned, and now we're going to gavel in the regularly scheduled city council meeting. Good evening, everyone. The time is 7:09 PM. It is Tuesday, February 7th, and I'm going to call this regularly scheduled city council meeting to order. Would all please rise for the pleasure of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Would the city secretary please call the roll?
Mitchell?
Here.
Tobias?
Here.
Heiser?
Here.
Flores Kale?
Here.
Zuniga?
Present.
Bradshaw?
Here.
Parsley?
Here.
All right, seven members present. We have a quorum. Next up, approval of the minutes.
Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to approve the minutes for city council special meeting on January 17th, meetings as well for the regular meeting, including the workshop meeting that was held on January 28th and the special meeting on the same day for January 28th of 2023.
I do have a question.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion by Mayor Protem, seconded by Councilor Parsley, that we approve the minutes. Is there discussion on the motions? Councilor Flores K.
Thank you. I just have a quick question to make sure. The verbiage that we talked about earlier in our emails, making sure that the motion was correct for the last agenda item for, I think it was Windmere? I didn't get a chance to look at it. But can we make sure of that? Sorry, mine's like, as long as I can just note that we can go back and just address it if there isn't.
Okay. We can bring it up throughout the meeting at any time if you want to.
Okay, yeah. Thank you.
All right, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Next up is citizen comments. At this time, we ask anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak on any item, please do so. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes and that you direct those comments to the mayor and council. We also ask that you fill out a citizen comments form and submit that to either myself or the city secretary. I have several folks registered to speak. First up, Robert Rizzo.
What brings me here today is Agenda Item 44. I wanted to give you all a history lesson since y'all are all pretty new to Kyle. Kyle had a history of retrofitting things and kicking the can down the road, so to speak. The police department, every time we needed to upgrade it, we kicked the can down the road, went from building to building to building until we finally decided, as a council, to build a brand-new police station. So that's why, right now, I'm very upset when I see an item like this come up. And when we're talking about our seniors, these are the people, our pioneers, who came before us, who blazed the trail for us, who are very important to us, and we're all going to be seniors. I'm actually a senior now, part of the CAS group. So I just wanted to come by and tell you that don't kick this can down the road, don't move them to another building. They've worked hard for the last four years, raising dollars to buy a brand, to get a building, to start the architecture. The county has donated $200,000. Ourselves, as a council, gave $200,000. When we bring things like this up, it really is upsetting because it looks like we're pushing our seniors down the road. We're not going to honor our agreement with them, and I'm asking you, honor the agreement. Don't kick the can down the road. Move them when you move them into a new building, please. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next up, Susan Reyna.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Susan Reyna. I am here again on behalf of the Katherine Anne Porter Literary Center to let you know of another event that's coming up that's free and open to the public next Friday, February 17th, at 7:30 PM at 508 West Center Street at the Katherine Anne Porter House. We'll have another author visiting. This time, we'll have Jane Wong. She'll be reading and signing books there. She's the author of How Not to Be Afraid of Everything and Overpour, and her debut memoir is coming out this year. She's also an associate professor of creative writing at the Western Washington University. Her poems have appeared in the Best American Non-Required Reading, Best American Poetry, The New York Times, American Poetry Review, and others. She's a Kundaman Fellow. She's a recipient of a Pushcart Prize and a fellowship from the U.S. Fulbright Program. She has other awards as well and is also an artist in other ways. And I'm very excited that she's coming here to our town, and so I wanted to invite all of you and all of our city. This is free and open to the public to come out and hear her, and then you'll have the option to buy a book if you'd like her to sign one. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reyna. Next up, Rodrigo Amaya. If you wouldn't mind filling out the rest of this form when you get a second.
Rodrigo Amaya, mayor, council, I'm here today to address some serious concerns that the city is faced with. I'm not sure where y'all are as far as the process for the city manager, but I did meet with the interim city manager a couple of weeks back on some serious issues. There's going to be some legal action coming against the city of Kyle. Two, one of them was for illegal firing of a former employee that was fired while her father passed away. And the current interim city manager is somewhat responsible for that illegal act. I know FMLA requires, allows you some time to go and bury your loved one. That's one of the things I do know. The other thing, on the other issue that I brought up to his attention, it was an 11-minute meeting, which clearly tells me that he didn't really take it serious. Now, reason being is I have several agencies, like the ACLU and some other serious legal power hitters, that are going to hopefully, you know, kind of help me architect something that needs to be addressed. And that, again, the interim city manager is the one responsible for a lot of that. So if for some reason you all are considering him to be some kind of a permanent, you might want to reconsider because he does have a history of not making, you know, very good choices for the city of Kyle. And nowadays, you know, legal fees are pretty expensive and stuff, so just wanted to share that with you, mayor. Thank you, guys. I'll fill it out.
Next up, Betty Conley.
Good evening, mayor and city council and city workers. My name is Betty Conley. I live at 87 Eagle Creek Drive here in Kyle, and I am the current president of the Kyle Area Senior Zone, known as CAS. We're a nonprofit, 501(c)(3) that's incorporated since 2006. CAS has become an integral part of the larger Hayes County community, a place to make friends, enjoy meals, travel together, learn new skills, provide encouragement and support and education for our seniors, as well as for families and the community. Our goal is to build a new senior community center with the city and county's help that will provide a much-needed space to accomplish what is to be a one-stop center for all in the community, improving and meeting the needs of the physical, mental, social, and spiritual needs of the seniors in this diverse community. Our membership has now passed over 1,000 and about 15 new members a month. New memberships for last year was 150 new members. CAS highlights last year, we partnered with volunteers with the city of Kyle. We have desk volunteers consisting of 399 shifts for this year, totaling 1,865 hours of service. We partnered with the library with community movie nights, the Hayes County Food Bank with senior nutrition and wellness classes, as well as for disabled adults. We partnered with Philomena Orchard Park, Legend Oaks, and we are called the CAS companions, where we go in and we call bingos or sit with residents, do the gardening, so they see other faces other than the people in their community. We partnered with Sage Independent Living, Coahuana's Unforgettable Families, the VFW, local businesses, and sponsors with educational programs for health and wellness and Medicare. We have Girl Scouts involved, and now we're looking at Boy Scouts to achieve their badges and awards. CAS celebrated their first MLK Junior event in January. We celebrated Black History Month, hosted a senior resource fair for the whole community. We formed a planners' club that develops for two missions. One is we make these Matt Dollar grocery bags for the homeless, and two, we provide a creative way to raise money for CAS. We hosted the city of Kyle's first Juneteenth flag raising. We were given the award from the Chamber of Commerce Excellence Award for the best nonprofit of Kyle. We hosted the first Viva Mexico Fiesta and Dance and celebrated Mexico Independence Day. Kyle Quilters hosted their annual quilt show with a special endorsement from the City of Kyle Arts and Cultural Commission. We hosted the first feast around the world and celebrated the Day of the Dead with an altar. We are always involved in school drives, the haircuts, and toy drives here in this community. Our volunteer hours for just last year is over 15,385, which shows that CAS is just not a social, but we are a community service program for all. We hope to continue to build our partnership with better communication and collaboration with the city. We want to thank you for your support in helping us in our growth, and we're excited in the anticipation of the new senior community center that will indeed bridge generations while at the same time leaving a legacy. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Conley. Our next up is Chelsea Colly.
Hi, good evening. My name is Chelsea Colly, and it is my first time to speak here, so thanks for taking the time to listen, and I really appreciate all of you for everything that you do for us. Firstly, it has come to my attention that some of us eastsiders, for lack of a better term, the residents that live east of 35 may not get as many amenities and allocations because we aren't showing up enough. And it seems like the bulk of the residents in Kyle are showing up west of 35, so that seems to be like where the bulk of the money goes, which makes sense. So I'm encouraging everybody on the east side of 35, just come and show up so that we can get some of the benefits and amenities, too. The squeaky wheel gets the grease, so to speak. So when issues arise in Plum Creek, for example, the neighborhood comes and complains, and they get funding to address their issues. So because there is less attendance from residents east of 35, we're not able to, like I said, reap the benefits. So I'm here representing Water Leaf Subdivision, and we have a few of us here tonight, which is fabulous. And I love that we're coming together as a neighborhood from both sides of the aisle to represent our neighborhood and our needs and concerns. I love that this is a bipartisan issue, and regardless of political beliefs, we can both show up and advocate for our, you know, quality of life and maintaining our home values. So on Sunday, just wanted to let you know, we had someone come to our house to give us an interview, and there's an article that's coming out tomorrow, and it's going to be basically what we've been going through, residents near the back of Water Leaf Subdivision. And I contacted a couple of city members, so I think some of you are aware, but there was kind of a big deal that went down over the weekend, and so that article is going to be going to print tonight, and it'll be come out on the Hayes Free Press tomorrow. So that'll detail everything. But basically, in a nutshell, this weekend, there have been dumpsters next to the entrance of the wastewater treatment plant, which is at the back of our neighborhood and Water Leaf Subdivision. And these dumpsters have been there since Monday, and we had called because we don't know why there are dumpsters sitting on our city street, blocking the entrance to the wastewater treatment plant. We never received a call back, but on Saturday, I was playing with my son, oh, my time's almost up, playing with my son, and it sunk really bad, and we come to find out that those dumpsters were filled with poop, and the poop was leaking human waste on our streets. So it was very disappointing to the residents of Water Leaf Subdivision, and we called to complain, and they did remove the dumpsters immediately in the morning, which we appreciate, but they never did clean up the leakage. So they just put some powder over it, and then they just drove over it. They've been driving over that and tracking that through our neighborhood for the last two days as they repaved the roads and the wastewater treatment plant. So the article will come out tomorrow, and that will go over a lot of the things that we've been going through the past nine years, and it's just been thing after thing. The smell is worse and worse and worse. There's a prison fence now behind our neighborhood, and I'm just here to really advocate for our neighborhood because we really need to get that entrance switched over. They're going to switch the entrance over, but we really need to get that switched over because they're tracking poop through our neighborhood.
Thank you, Ms. Colly.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much. Neil Breen is next up.
Mayor and council, I'm here tonight to protest item number 28 on the agenda, as I spoke to y'all in the last meeting. I'm going to keep this short and sweet. My chief concern with this is that the greatest cost being added to business ownership in Kyle on here is in the first year of business ownership by several thousand dollars. I'm sure y'all know that the most taxing and difficult part of starting a business is the first year. So I'm a bit disheartened to hear that the city of Kyle is interested in making the largest weight to land on small business owners be in their first year of operations. So I understand that you want to pass this in some capacity, but I would encourage y'all to consider reducing the barrier of initial business ownership at the very least. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that is all the citizen comments forms that I have in front of me. Is there anyone else who wishes to come forward and speak? And please state your name for the record, and please fill out a form when you're finished.
I apologize. I didn't fill out the form.
It's fine.
My name was on there, but no form, didn't realize it. And this is Dallas Obergon. He also wants to speak as well.
Okay.
So he yields to me. No, I'm kidding. I won't give up. My name is Megan Partlow. I live in Creekside Village, which is off of Burlison, near Marketplace Drive, near the roundabout, and also, fun fact, backs up to Plum Creek. So if you walk through the fence line, you can actually walk right into the Plum Creek neighborhood. The reason why I'm here is because we are the femoral creek for Plum Creek. So all of the water that comes from Plum Creek comes into our neighborhood through the drainage systems that are over there. And the reason why I'm here is because you guys are asking the county to build a rail siding, first off, in that area for around a 10,000-foot rail siding to relieve the traffic down here. That's the first project. The second project that I'm also thinking of here, and I'll get to my point in just a moment because it's about flooding, is that Marketplace Drive is trying to be built up. I'm excited about the development that's already been approved, that has a coffee shop, and it looks really interesting, right down to the end of Extended Marketplace, or, excuse me, Extended Burlison. What I'm concerned about is the area that directly backs up to my house. We're 150 feet away from the railroad right now. We have trees. We are very concerned when you build that rail siding that those trees will go away, and then we will have so much noise in our neighborhood that our neighbors and myself cannot go to sleep. The other concern is that currently, as it stands, when it rains, it floods into my backyard already, and you guys just got, well, not you guys, FEMA changed the flood plane for a 100-year flood plane and removed our house. When we bought our house four years ago, we had to buy flood insurance. So the concern is, with all these projects that are happening coinciding right there, that this is likely going to cause flooding. I've met with Commissioner Jones. I've met with Union Pacific. They had no concerns about flooding, even though I sent them photos where the flood is going into my backyard. So I hope you consider the project that is on for reconsideration today around Marketplace Drive. There's a silver lining around it. I mean, it's great that there's going to be businesses and that there's going to be apartments, and I'm excited because when my daughter turns 16, she'll have a place to work. But what I'm concerned about is my house flooding, and I'm 150 feet from the railroad. There's houses there that are 20 feet away from the railroad. So just be, think about it if you were living there. Think about if it was your neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone else who wishes to come forward and speak? And please state your name for the record, and please fill out a citizen comment form when you're finished.
My name is Domingo Romo Castilla, past president of Kyle, returning here again to my home. And I'm the vice president of CAS, and I just want to augment to what our president stated earlier. Before you see the bulletin of CAS and all activities that we do on a monthly basis, we have been on an annual budget, operating budget of $12,000 a year. Can you imagine what it takes to perform all those activities on a $12,000 operating budget, plus any fundraising we can accomplish? It takes a lot of work. So we plan to augment those activities, and we also would like for you to invite all of you, especially on a Tuesday, we have our luncheons, to visit us and see what's going on at our center, and you can see why we need a new facility. So once again, I would like to invite all of you and just let us know and to be present at one of our activities, especially on Tuesday, doing a luncheon. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to come forward?
Good evening, mayor, city council. Several weeks ago, I forget when I first spoke, I'm sorry, my name is Jose.
Thank you.
I recently spoke about item number 16, which was defencing, in which I explained that my backyard was beginning to look like a prison yard. So we were told this expansion, I'm basically piggybacking off of item number 16 at this point. So we were told that the expansion project of the water treatment facility would be completed in the spring of 2022, and here we are, almost in the spring of '23, and we've received no new information or updates regarding the expansion process. I could stand up here all day and basically explain how much of a nuisance it's been over those few years of the expansion process. The noise, the smell, the shaking of the house, working at all hours of the day and night, you know, sleep is non-existent at this point, dust and particles every time they are working, you know, it's very hard for the kids to even play in our own backyard at this point. Several medical concerns have now been coming up, and I find it no coincidence that four out of the five houses have been experienced, have been experiencing the same medical concerns. My seven-year-old has now been losing her hair. Several bald spots have been forming, and I believe there's an underlying result of that. I think it's not been brought up yet, but I think that water treatment facility has a big influence in that. And because of this slow agonizing process of the expansion, you know, I feel like we get bad news each week. I've recently had thousands of dollars in vehicle damage from rodents that have been pushed away from that particular area and done damage to our vehicles. And most recent, like Chelsea had began talking about, was the dumpster that was set out on a public roadway and just filled with bags of fecal matter and just fecal matter itself without any bags. It's also been leaking onto the public roadway. And at this point, it's somewhat comical because who's running the show here? Like, it's kind of ridiculous that we have a dumpster that's leaking hazardous material on our public roadway, and the dumpster itself, which will be moved, it typically travels throughout our Water Leaf Subdivision. Again, I've expressed concern about the market value of our homes. At this point, we just went out. I love where Kyle's headed. I love where it's going, but at this point, we feel trapped. We've experienced foundation issues from the shaking and the work that's been going on behind us. And again, at this point, we just went out. But again, I feel like we will have a hard time selling our home at this point due to the constant issues that come with the expansion process. So again, I would just like, at bare minimum, an update at least of where this expansion process is going, when it's going to be completed, and just a little of that information will go a long way. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to come forward and speak? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close citizen comments period. Citizens' comment period is now closed. Next up is agenda order. I have a couple items that I wanted to move around just based on the volume of folks here. I wanted to move the police proclamations and presentations forward. And is there anyone else who has items they want to move forward? Councilor Flores K.
Thank you. I'd like to move up Agenda Items Number 32 and 44, please. Probably 44 first and then 32.
You said 44.
Let me double-check that. Yes, 44.
Yep.
And then 32.
That's TNR.
Yes, agreed. That was the other one I'd forgotten. Okay, I agree with all those. Does anybody have any other items that they want to move forward?
Mayor, I'd like to move up 37, 38, and 39.
All right. If there are no objections, we'll put those after Councilor Flores Kail's items that she moved forward and after the proclamations and presentations. So I'm going to try to reorient because I think that's all a good reorient, so if y'all will hang with me. Any other items? Next up is going to be Agenda Item Number 10, Presentation and Recognition of the 2023 Kyle Citizens Police Academy Alumni Association Board of Directors. And then I'm going to go ahead and bring up Agenda Item Number 11 as well and let Chief do both of those at the same time. Is that okay? Or do you want me to just wait till this is over and then do the next one?
That's right. We can do them both.
All right.
If we can do them both back-to-back, that's great.
Okay, and then we'll also do Agenda Item Number 11, Presentation and Recognition of Program Update on the Kyle Police Citizen on Patrol Program. Chief Barnett.
Thank you, mayor. Jeff Barnett, chief of police, for the record. Mayor, council, thank you tonight for allowing us to come and to show off some of our most talented citizens, some of our most dedicated volunteers, and all of the great work that they do. It is customary that we come before the city council and announce the outgoing, the retiring board, the leadership of our citizens, police academy alumni, and we welcome the incoming board of directors, so that you can put a face with a name if you don't happen to already know them. As you will see tonight, many of these are familiar faces because they are tremendous volunteers in our community, and they have a long history of service in the community, and you've probably seen them many times in many organizations and specifically the citizens' police academy alumni. So I'm going to ask the outgoing board members, if you are an outgoing board member, would you mind coming at least up to the front of the room, off to the left, so that they can put a face with a name? This is our outgoing board of directors. We have President Pat Gibson, Vice President Maria Roquejo, Secretary Phyllis Kearns, Treasurer Erin Story, and Historian Pam Gibson. And I want to say a few words about this group and the things that were accomplished in the past year, but I'll be brief. So the last year or so has been met with the So the last year or so has been met with the Police Department with great support from our community, great support from our Citizens Police Academy alumni group. This leadership board that you see, they oversaw the actions and participated in what I'm about to describe to you. Throughout the last 12 or so months, they oversaw a kitchen redecorating at the old, or at the current Police Department next door. As many of you know, that was a rehabbed bank facility that did not have a kitchen that was well-suited for a large number of employees. And this group came in and they repainted, they reattached cabinetry doors, they made the kitchen area more inviting to where our staff could enjoy their lunch or cook their lunch and then eat elsewhere in the building. Secondly, on the west side of the building, you may not see it, it's the Police Department parking lot, it's where our police vehicles are at, so it's kind of hidden out of the way, but it meant a lot to us. The area, in the flowerbed area, was pretty much mud. So every time it would rain, our officers would trek through the mud to their vehicles and come back through the mud, getting in and out. They would track that in the PD, and it kept the place unsightly. They came out and on their own, they put gravel down, they redecorated it, they removed old plants that didn't need to be there anymore that were dying, and they did an amazing job. Another thing they did, they installed a snack and drink machine this year inside the kitchen. It's for funds, they raised funds, and they use those for Police Department purposes, things that they do for the office staff. But they put in a snack and drink machine, they use Venmo, they get paid for the stuff that they're providing, and it helps give the officers a refreshing drink or a snack or energy bar throughout the day. They decorated offices throughout the year on major holidays and major events, things that mean something to the Police Department, special days for animal control, code enforcement for both sworn and non-s sworn staff, including dispatch. And lastly, I'll kind of wrap up. They volunteered at many major events through in the city. Just to name you two, the Capitol of Texas Police Motorcycle Shootout is an annual event that happens every year in March. They always come out in big numbers and help us volunteer for that, that event in which we have about 100 to 150 police motorcycle operators from around the country come to the Buta area and train, and we're all partners in that, and they volunteer with that. And then lastly, they come to all of our police testing events, and we run a variety of obstacle courses and physical testing, and they help us man those stations so that we can accurately record all of the times and such for our applicants. That's just a small handful of the things that this outgoing board has done. And I'm not going to necessarily bring them up and put them on the spot, but could we give the outgoing board a round of applause for this and many things that they did? It is my pleasure to introduce to you the incoming Board of Directors. They've already taken office, and they've hit the ground running, planning many events, doing many good things this year. I would like to announce this is the 10th year for the Citizens Police Academy alumni, so this is an important year for us as we celebrate their service to the community and their partnership with the Police Department. If I could have now the incoming or the current executive board, we have President Dallas Lee, Vice President Pam Gibson, Secretary Erin Story, Treasurer Pete Rayner, Historian Judy Rayner. And this group will be coming up on my left as well, so that they can be seen, and I would be remiss if I didn't allow Officer James Plant, who oversees our programs, come say a few words as well. So Officer Plant.
For the record, James Plant, Kyle Police Department. This is our new board. They are already hitting the floor running. Majority of this room right here is actually planning an awards banquet for the Police Department right now. They've been out hustling is only I can think of, because they've been putting in a lot of work, meeting with business owners and getting sponsorship for this event that will take place next week on the 18th. So we only got a few more days, guys. So can't thank them enough for them stepping up and taking on a role like they have. You have a lot on your plate, but we appreciate everything you do, not only for our Police Department, but for the residents of Kyle.
Mayor and Council, continuing with our brief presentation. So now we're going to address the annual report on our Citizens on Patrol, another extremely valuable group, and if we can have our Citizens on Patrol maybe take the same spot here in the room so that you can be seen, you'll notice that they have on their white uniforms, so that they're highly visible and known in the community. I'm going to let Officer Plant go down his report, but I want to tell you how valuable that this group of individuals have been to our department. So in order to serve as a Citizens on Patrol, you have to go through our basic and then our advanced CPA classes, and then you have to take very specific advanced training to be a Citizens on Patrol. The City Council has authorized us up to eight positions. We currently have six of those filled, and Officer Plant and the team are constantly working towards filling those last two positions. I can't tell you, or he's going to tell you, how many amazing things they have done for us, especially in the last year, because I could go down a long list. I know that council members already know them, because I see you volunteering at events when we had the freezes, when we're panning out water, or food, or anything else in the community. And while you're there serving, these volunteers are there serving as well. They continue to serve day in and day out, they're on routine patrols in our community. You may have seen them in the new vehicle that we were able to acquire for them this year that made them highly visible in the community, so that people can feel safer. And we have an additional set of eyes out in the community, helping observe and report and keep our community safe. And with that, I will turn it over to Officer James Plant.
He kind of hit on everything. But this is a great group of guys, and one's a little overachiever in the back over here, Frank Schultz. He keeps up with our stats, and I'm just, I'm gonna throw a few out. We do different things on our patrols, whether it's assisting code enforcement with seeing visuals of, you know, overgrown yards, sometimes you have junk vehicles and stuff like that. So they'll take reports that have a courtesy layer, they put on the vehicle, and then they give the copy to our code enforcement, so that they can follow up. And obviously, if it's a code violation where it needs to be removed, they can do that. So that's just one of their things. They go through the parking lots at our shopping centers, and if they see vehicles parked illegally, they'll leave a courtesy notification. Because there were some handicap laws that had changed with the disabled veterans plate, where you're required, I don't know how to play, but also the placard, a lot of people didn't know that. They took it upon themselves to get the literature to educate folks as well on it. They're not an enforcement factor, so they're not writing tickets, they're just giving courtesy notifications. And if we notice that it's a problem area, then we can pull patrol in there to handle the parking violations, if we need that, it's a consistent thing. Again, they're extra eyes and ears. Couple other things they do is, they're available at the, you know, drop of a hat. We have an ice storm and we need to, you know, a neighborhood doesn't have water, and we're going to need traffic control at a water station, they're the first people we call. And I've seen them respond within 30 minutes, you know? I can't get out of my driveway, but there's a couple of them that somehow find ways of making it there. They're a great group. We use them at everything from the parades to police testings. Overall, and I gotta hit these numbers real quick, I think this stuff is in your backup material, I'm not sure if you get time to read it, please do, because the numbers are great. But over the last year from December, their year starts January 1 through December 31st, a total of, between the six of them, a total of 1,223 hours of volunteer time. So that's, a majority of that time is just on patrol in the streets. They work four-hour shifts twice a week, some of them work four or five shifts a month, but they, I'm sorry, twice a month, they do two, four-hour shifts, but some of them overachieving do about six or eight shifts a month, depending on their availability. So thank you guys for all, that you guys have done. And I encourage you guys to meet up with them one day and go for a ride along and see what they do, and see how they operate, because I think it would be good for you. Oh, and I'm sorry, so let me introduce them. We have Frank Schultz here on the left, followed by Mike Rubson, Albert Karch, Robert Price, Mary Raymond, and Phyllis Kearns.
Mayor and Council, that concludes our presentation. Do you have any questions before they step out? They have a board meeting and a membership meeting next door.
Does anybody have any comments they want to make towards it? Councilman Floris Kael.
I just want to say thank you. I appreciate, I know some of you guys personally, and you guys are really awesome, so thank you for all you do.
Yeah, I was just gonna say I like five of you really well, so I won't tell you who the six is.
Thank you for everything you do.
Thank you all very much, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, they are an amazing group. Thank you all very much, and I know you have a membership meeting next door, so thank you all, we'll let you get to it. Thank you.
All right, next up, we're going to go to Agenda Item Number 7. Actually, if they're going to clear out, maybe we'll wait just a second before they do. So let's take 60 seconds, and then we're going to do the Black History Month proclamation. Mayor Protim.
Thank you, Mayor, appreciate it very much. I am very honored to read this proclamation. Just for the record, I did not write this, this has been done from a previous author. But nonetheless, I am very honored to bring this forward, because it is very important for our community. So, as I put on my glasses here. Whereas after starting as an idea for ways to celebrate African-American achievement nine years earlier, in 1924, a celebration that eventually was renamed to Negro Achievement Week began, and the outreach was significant, but the desire for a greater impact was persisted. We are going back to the beautiful history, and it's going to inspire us for great achievements. By February 1926, this statement of historian Dr. Carter G. Woodson, along with the idea that he and other prominent African-American figures would also then become Negro History Week. Dr. Woodson chose February for reasons for continuing what was already familiar to many. Since 1865, black communities have celebrated fallen President Abraham Lincoln's birthday, and then by the late 1890s, former slave and prominent obolist activist Frederick Douglass' birthday, both occurring in February. This showed his true effort to extend the study of black history, not create a new tradition. Finally, in 1976, this celebration was expanded to include the entire month of February, and today, Black History Month garners support throughout the country as people of all ethnic and social backgrounds discuss the African-American experience. And whereas the city of Kyle takes pride in its African-American heritage, this can be seen in Kyle with its entire scale of history, from the enslaved people into its founding to the courageous freedmen who settled in the area, and from the early traders representing businesses in Kyle, and those who have served and represented this growing community in various capacities, including publicly elected offices like former City Council Mayor Mattie Welch, formerly Mattie Bradford, first black city councilwoman, Ray Bryant, Dex Allison, and former Mayor James Atkins. And whereas the city of Kyle encourages the preservation of our African-American history and applauds the efforts of the groups such as the Hayes County Historical Commission, as well as the local individuals in helping restore, preserve, and maintain Kyle historic locations, such as the African-American Cemetery, Family Pioneer Cemetery, which has received a state historical marker. And whereas the city of Kyle joins in the unified endeavor of its community leaders around Hayes County in paying homage to those who have helped carry on the resolute efforts and the continual reminder of achievements and sacrifices by African-Americans, men and women, who have contributed to the advancements of human civilization. And whereas this year's theme, Resistance, Black Resistance in the Past, Present, and Future, as determined by the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History, African-Americans have resisted historic and ongoing oppressions in various forms over two centuries. Historically and today, in the 21st century, African-Americans have worked the political angle to seek their rightful place in this country and consistently push the United States to live up to its ideals of freedom, liberty, and justice for all. Therefore, be proclaimed by the city of Kyle that February 1 through March 1, 2023, should be celebrated as Black History Month in appreciation of the many achievements of Kyle African-American community and those across this nation and its history.
All right, thank you, Mayor Protim.
Yes, sir.
Anything you want to add?
Yes, again, it's a true honor to read this. I have so much joy in bringing this forward, and there's just so much great people that we have that have accomplished so much, and we need to recognize. And so I'm just very, very honored to read this and bring forth in the recognition of this.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything they would like to add? Councilman Floris Kael.
I would like to say thank you to Toby, Councilmember Tobias, first and foremost. I would also like to recognize the fact that we have Ms. Mattie Welch in the audience, and I've met her, and talking to her has been nothing less than an honor and a privilege. She's got some really great stories. She's an overall great person, and her niece that sits next to her picks up the same characteristics as her aunt. And I would also like to extend, if it's possible, Rachel, to have her join us on the Progress for Peace, as maybe someone that can come and speak or just be present. Okay, I know she's back there, too. It would be great to have, again, she is the first black councilperson ever in the history of Kyle, and it would be, I think, a real honor for the city to have her there. So I'm glad to see you here, and hopefully we get to take a picture?
Yep. And on that note, I'd also like to thank Ms. Vanessa Westbrook, ma'am, thank you so much for your help on this as well. It takes the community to bring these types of things together, and especially the research and the help, and so I wanted to be able to say thank you for helping me on this as well. It's very, very important for all of us, by the way. Thank you.
All right, so what we'll do now is we'll take a picture. So if there's anyone in the audience who wishes to participate in the picture showing the proclamation, we ask you to come forward, and we'll take that photo now.
Sorry, bad angles with tables. All right, on the count of three. One, two, three. And we're right here. One, two, three. One, two, three.
Okay, next up is Agenda Item Number 8, Dating Violence Awareness and Prevention Month. As you know, this is Dating Violence Awareness and Prevention Month, and so as a result, I'd love to bring this proclamation forward. Whereas one in three adolescents is a victim of physical, sexual, emotional, or verbal abuse from a dating partner, and whereas the effects of dating violence impact youth in all communities and cuts across economic, racial, gender, and societal barriers, and whereas respectful, supportive, and nonviolent relationships are key to safety, health, and academic success, and whereas by providing teens and young adults with education about healthy relationships and relationship skills, and by changing attitudes that support violence, we recognize that dating violence can be prevented, and whereas family, friends, teachers, coaches, faith leaders, community members, and other important people in young people's lives have the power to influence youth in positive ways, and whereas last year, the Hayes Caldwell Women's Center provided 50 And whereas last year, the Hayes Caldwell Women's Center provided 55 Dating Violence Prevention and Healthy Relationships presentations to 3,394 teens and young adults. And whereas we must work together to raise awareness and promote healthy dating relationships with activities and conversations about mutually respectful and nonviolent relationships in our homes, schools, and communities. Now, therefore, the city council hereby proclaims the month of February 2023 as Dating Violence Awareness and Prevention Month for teens and young adults, and does hereby call upon the citizens of Kyle to work together to raise awareness and prevent dating violence in our community and beyond in any form. Thank you for letting me present that. Do we have anyone from the Hayes Caldwell Women's Center who's here?
Good evening. My name is Diana Flores, and I am a bilingual legal advocate for the Hayes County Caldwell Women's Center. And I just want to thank you, Mayor, and the city council, and the city of Kyle for all the support that you all provide to our young ones so that they can develop positive relationships in their life. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I think we have a couple councilmembers here wearing orange. I would have. I don't have any orange, so just as an FYI, wearing orange during this month is supportive there as well. Were you wanting a photograph?
Yes.
Yes.
Just so they can know I was here.
Yes. So we'll do this twice. Does anybody, Councilmember Floris Cale?
I just want to say, first of all, thank you. I've took a tour, and I'm going to encourage anybody on here that can to take a tour of the Hayes Caldwell Women's Center. By the way, which is not just for women. It is for men as well. And additionally, this is such a great agenda proclamation because our youth are our future. And so, boys and girls, they need to understand the importance of self-respect and self-worth. And I think it starts at the young age, and so I think this is a really great proclamation. And thank you to Mayor Mitchell for reading that. That was really awesome. Thank you.
Right now that you've mentioned that, we try to stick to HCWC because at one point it was a women's center, but like you said, it's for everybody that needs the help.
I didn't know that. Thank you. Okay, next up is Spay and Neuter Awareness Proclamation. Councilmember Zuniga.
Thank you, Mayor. So this one, I also did not write. It was already drafted. But I really was honored to have the opportunity to mention this one and to make it a proclamation for awareness. Thank you, Ms. Sherry Boyett, for sending me back some comments. And the proclamation is, whereas domestic animals have provided companionship to people for centuries, offering love and loyalty, along with providing many other benefits to their owners and human families. And whereas it is estimated that the majority of U.S. households own pets, understanding that the mental and emotional benefits of pet companionship, yet millions of animals are still without permanent homes. And whereas each year, millions of animals who are otherwise healthy and adoptable are either euthanized, left homeless, forced to live on the streets, or to be kept in shelters. And whereas Texas is the number-one state for animal shelter deaths, nearly 61,000 dogs and cats were killed in animal shelters across Texas in 2021. Whereas it is estimated that the majority of pets living in underserved communities are not spayed or neutered, leaving them open to reproducing and adding to the overpopulation problem. And whereas spay and neuter initiatives reduce incidence of homeless animals, certain life-threatening diseases, and even curb negative behavior. Whereas the city of Kyle, in support of the Positive Outcomes Implementation Plan, supports responsible pet ownership and encourages the community to fix their pets to reduce the number of unwanted pets, which may become homeless, stray, or enter the regional animal shelter. And whereas spaying and neutering of pets and trap, neuter, vaccinate, return of free-roaming community cats are integral components of reaching and increasing higher live outcome rate and reducing the number of stray and homeless dogs and cats. Last year, there were 615 Kyle intakes in 2022 and a total intake of 4,422. So therefore, be it proclaimed by the city council of the city of Kyle that the month of February 2023 helped promote Spay and Neuter Awareness Month. Also like to say thank you to Animal Control for doing wellness checks during the winter freeze that we had. It's very important not to forget about the animals in our community, whether they're in shelters or not, to be responsible homeowners and to take care of these fur babies who are homeless or in our communities. And do what we can to promote spay and neuter.
All right.
Awareness.
Thank you, Councilmember Zuniga. We want to do a photo as well with anyone who wants to come forward on this item.
All right. On the count of three. Ready? One, two, three. All right. Okay. Looking right here. One, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you.
All right. If there are no objections, the next one I want to do, before we go into the city manager's report and consent, is the Trap Neuter Release, Agenda Item Number 32. All right. Seeing none, I'm going to bring Agenda Item Number 32, and it will also coincide with Agenda Item Number Six, which is the board appointment. So Agenda Item Number 32 is Second Reading and Ordinance of the City of Kyle, Texas, Emending Chapter Five of the City of Kyle Code of Ordinances: Animals to Include Article 10, Trap, Neuter, Vaccinate Return, Providing Program Requirements, Providing Liability and Limitations or Liability Providing for Enforcement and Retention of Rights, Providing a Severability Clause and Open Meetings Clause, Providing an Effective Date and Related Matters. This item has Mrs. Sands's sponsorship. The backup material does capture between first and second reading the majority of the amendments that we made with one exception. And that's in Section Three on Trap, Neuter, Vaccinate Return Authorized. The last sentence says, "The program shall be volunteer-based. City of Kyle and Animal Control will not capture or return animals per the program unless they sign up as volunteer caretakers." My personal opinion is that that change allows for our animal control maybe not to engage the program in the way that we might mean to. And I would prefer to see the language that says, "The city of Kyle and Kyle Animal Control will coordinate the program, including work with residents, capture or return animals per the program through a partnership with the City of San Marcos Regional Animal Shelter." So it's taking the, if they don't sign up as a volunteer, they do not have to capture or return animals. It's taking that away, and it's in place putting, instead, it's putting in a language that does say that we do want to have animal control participate with the volunteer program to add trap, neuter, vaccinate, and return. So as it relates to second reading, that's the change that I would like to propose making. So I would like to make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number 32 and to amend, hang on, and to amend Section Three, striking the last sentence and replacing it with the following. "City of Kyle and Kyle Animal Control will coordinate the program, including work with residents, capture or return animals per the program through a partnership with the City of San Marcos Regional Animal Shelter."
Second.
All right. Motion by the mayor, second by Councilmember Parsley. Is there discussion on that motion? Councilmember Floris Cale.
There was a motion made prior to that was going to provide us with some backup information regarding budget and policy and procedure, and I was just wondering if you could give us the status on that?
I'd have to defer to city manager on that.
We're still developing that. We'll bring it back after the ordinance is fully approved, and we've had a chance to really vet all the different variables.
Okay. Another concern I have, and I don't think this is going to be a page question, but I am excited to see the people online who are really excited about this program. I have tried to put some fillers out there for volunteers, and even though everybody's excited, it's kind of been a pushback for the volunteers. So if we can get a name of someone that I can give the names to that's like a volunteer coordinator, that would be really helpful because even though there's not that backup material that I wish was here, it's clearly going to pass, and if so, I would like to move forward.
Three months.
Three months. Okay. So I guess my question is, if somebody wants to volunteer, give them your name?
My name is Sharon Boyett.
No, no, no. I'm saying, whose name do I give them?
Oh, mine.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Is there any further discussion on the motion? All is, Mayor Protem, sorry.
If you, Jerry, if you wouldn't mind getting that information for the record because I'm sure not everybody saw or heard. That way, it's just documented that we have somebody that's willing to contribute.
All right. Any other discussion? All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? All right. Motion carries seven to zero. It's officially passed. All right. Next up, I want to bring up Agenda Item Number Six. Consider and appoint a representative to the San Marcos Regional Animal Shelter Board. This is Chief Sodom.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Jeff Barnett, Chief of Police, for the record. We're here tonight to seek the city council's reappointment of Brianna, who serves as our current Neighborhood Services Supervisor and has for a number of years been our Animal Control Officer for the city of Kyle, and reappoint her to the position on the San Marcos Animal Shelter Advisory Committee. She served on that committee, I believe, for roughly 12 years now. It does take city council approval, and then they take that back to the City of San Marcos City Council for final approval. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have, and Brianna is here, too, if you have questions.
Okay. I have two. The first is related to terms. Does the San Marcos Regional Animal Shelter Advisory Committee, do they have term limits for how long someone can serve?
So I believe that they do. I spoke to San Marcos today. They did not give me the number of years. Brianna would be exceeding whatever that is. However, she said as a matter of practice. You want to answer it? Do you know? Because I talked to Darian today.
There is no term limit because it is the appointee by, because City of Kyle, City of Buta, and Hayes County, they have their separate individuals that are appointed by the city. So there is no, we have no term limits. Hayes County's rep doesn't have any term limits in either of the Buta.
Okay. My second question is really more of commentary for the council. As this advisory committee is developing, and obviously our partnership with the Regional Animal Shelter is increasing over time, there's certain political dynamics and community-facing dynamics of that advisory committee that I think are sort of coming into play as demonstrated in the last few meetings that we've had. You know, and I have personally seen Councilmember Zuniga really sort of champion some of the trap, neuter, vaccinate, return policies that we're trying to implement. He's also shown sort of a keen interest, and he did apply for this committee position as well. And I was also thinking about when we did our advisory interview panel appointments, that there were a couple different positions that he applied for and wanted to represent and wasn't able to achieve those just because at the time he was new to council. And so for myself, while I know Brianna has served on the board for a long time, this seemed like a pretty good fit, in my opinion, for Councilmember Zuniga. So I wanted to see, number one, if that is still an appointment that Councilmember Zuniga would like. And I think it's like four meetings a year, is what you said?
Yes, because it was four a year, right?
Right.
It is. It's law requires that it be three, and we've been setting for a year.
Are they in the evening? That's what I.
They are, they are two evening a year and two at noon.
Right. Okay.
So my personal opinion is based on kind of everything that's going on. I would love to see Councilmember Zuniga in that role, but that's just my opinion. I know, obviously, Brianna's been a part of that for a long time as well. So not a bad decision here, but I want to vouch for him. I know he applied. So is there discussion? Mayor Protem.
Mrs. Zuniga, do you feel comfortable with that and maybe also help be a liaison to the TNR program?
I think so, because this is a very new program. And I would have more, I'd be in there to have more information to help us understand what the shelter is trying to get done from a council perspective, listening to the county.
That way, if we eventually have to go to.
To make sure the volunteer program really gets up and running from our side.
Sounds good.
So that we're not overwhelming our animal control.
If you're comfortable, sir, I would support that if you wanted to take on this appointment.
Other discussion? Councilmember Floris Cale.
I just want to say thank you to both Councilmember Zuniga and to Brianna, you guys, for stepping up, and I appreciate it. I know you already do a lot, and so please, if it gets overwhelming, just let us know, okay? Because I know you do a lot, and I appreciate it.
And if you want to share it, we can share it. I mean, we can do two in two. We can redo a partnership with it. I don't want to take anything away from you, Brianna.
We had discussed as Neighborhood Services that it was part of the job duties, but it's something we can just take off the job duties. It's whoever wants to be a part of it. We've always liked the idea of having someone who sees the day-to-day with the shelter being on it. But there's whatever you guys would like to do.
I'll let the council decide.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Councilmember Miguel Zuniga to be a representative of the San Marcos Regional Animal Shelter Board. Motion by the mayor, second by Councilmember Floris Cale. Is there discussion on that motion? You know, we've had boards, sort of auxiliary boards, like the Arwa Board, where sometimes council members were on and then they rolled off because of the technical nature. It could be the case that this ends up being, you look and say, this really does need to stay with the animal control. But I'd love the idea, especially now with what's going on, for you to, exactly for the reasons that you articulated. So is there further discussion? All is in favor, say aye. Aye? All opposed? All right. Motion carries six to one. All right. All right. Next up, we'll do we'll do city manager's report and consent, and then we'll do the development deals, if that's okay. Am I missing one?
Make sure. Yeah, so we'll do city managers', CIP, consent, and then we'll do, we'll go with
the development. Oh, 44 is the seniors. Let's go ahead and do 44 as well now, if that's okay. Sorry. All right, next up is Agenda Item 44, discussion and possible action regarding city staff creating a plan to temporarily relocate CAS until funding for a permanent space is found and to create a shared crewed activity center calendar during the interim. Councilmember Floris Cale.
All right, thank you. I think this agenda item may have been misunderstood. Let me start by saying that I had spoken with CAS member Dawn Conley, and I let her know that this was going to be on here. What kind of sparked this was I was going to drop off some stuff to CAS, and she was like, well, I don't know who's in there, and so I don't know if I can go in there. And so I kind of was trying to get a good idea of how this shared situation was working. And this is by no means meant to kick anybody out of anything. This was to get you guys your own space, and I am very aware that the city has made an agreement to get you some permanent, permanent space, but during the interim, I really wanted you guys to not have to worry about days or calendars or anything that has to be shared with the City of Kyle, because I felt like you guys needed a little more freedom than that. Yeah, if you want to come up and speak, I'm okay with that. I want to hear back. That was like my ultimate goal was to hear back. And I did, I did leave my number, and I thought that somebody would call me if they had any questions, so I'm sorry.
The shared space gets complicated when we don't have the communication from both sides. And when we have the communication, we're always told, "The city council wants it this way, this is the way it has to be." We have a user agreement with the city, and yes, you have first choice for use of that building, but it does say on the next page that you would diligently work with the seniors, not upsetting programs, and that is not happening. We're just being told, "You can't have the building this time, the city's doing this, you can't have the building, city council says this." So that's why I try to elaborate, we need to have communication and collaboration as a team on both sides using this building. We cannot go in the building when you have the exercise lady there, for instance, because she doesn't want to hear the noise of the door, but our offices are in that building. We have the kitchen, we can't go, I think that's the incident with you. You had juice or something, you were donating for the event, and yet Dawn's on crutches and she couldn't get to the kitchen, but that's what she was saying, we can't go in there. So it's little stuff like that that is making a little wrench in things and not, the communication is, it's there when we're planning the calendar, but the calendar always doesn't stay. We plan it for the year, and then whatever comes up or whoever wants it, because there's times I'm told Jerry, Jerry wants it or the city wants it, nobody's letting us know. Let us know ahead of time. There's days that we have that, like the police department needed to do something, and it was a Friday, and it was our Friday, they called, we gave it to the police department, we'll work. We did for the fire department, we'll work if we can, but we would like the same courtesy on the other side. If there's a day that you need, but it's our day, we can offer another day. Is there any way we can work like that without always stepping on toes and making us feel that we're just being shoved aside to the curb every time the city wants something?
No, I heard, I heard you. I felt it.
And when that came out, I knew, but then today at lunch is when I got it all about the wording, and they were thinking that, you know, okay, the city, here we go again, because everything's blamed on the city. I've talked to Jerry many times. It's always blamed on the city, wants us out of there. We understand that. We want out of there too. We need a new building. We need to have the room, and I don't think there's any place, tell me if I'm wrong, that can house us the way CAS needs to be housed. We're talking about moving into a building that can feed 600. We're talking about moving into a building that has space where we can accommodate the exercise class, the city, the whoever, because it will be 40,000 square feet. We're talking about the meals, it's 80. Where are you going to have a space that has a commercial kitchen to move us to and that can feed 125 people or more? So we know it's not there. We know it has to be the new building.
Okay, so with that said, I felt your concerns, and my stress was, okay, where can we put, where can we find a space? And it's not my job, it's my job to bring it to council and decide if we want to do this or not. How do we not, it's not kick you guys down the road, but how do we bring relief to CAS as the city creates a plan for the, you know, the center? And so that's ultimately what this is about. How can we help you guys find somewhere to go, even if it's for, the building's not going to be built, we know that probably within the year for sure, right? And so you're going to have at least a year where you're sharing this building with the city. And so my hope is, I don't know if Mayor Mitchell wants to keep going back and forth.
It's up to you.
Okay.
I hope you don't mind, just real quick. We do not mind sharing the building and doing what we're doing with the building, but we do mind when we don't have consideration for when we have the building. Two years ago, you started the 25 Days of Christmas because you did that park. Two years ago, we were promised they'd find a place, we always had our Christmas party the second weekend of December. We'll find you a place. That never happened. Last year, we'll find you a place. Come August, oh, we couldn't find anything because it's too expensive. That never happened. So we couldn't have those events that we've always had since we've opened up in CAS. So now we, as CAS, sat down as a board, and we said, okay, we realize the city needs December. We, okay, they can have December, we'll do hats off to the New Year's, and we'll have our dinner party then. So we're willing to work like that, but it seems like it's one-sided. So that's what we would like.
Okay. So I guess with this agenda item, my hope was that that would never happen again, that you guys could have your own space that fits you guys. You guys could work with staff, because I think that's a conversation that needs to be had between CAS and staff, and then any solutions that's found comes back to the council, and then we decide ultimately. And I know at one point, I think the city was looking for a room so we could hold extra events for the city, but then I thought, well, what if we just, if we're going to rent that out anyways, why don't we rent that out for CAS? And so again, that's not really my job to try to find that solution. My job is just to decide if that's what the council wants to do. And again, this is not long-term. My hope is this is why we plan, the city plans with CAS, how we're going to move forward with a permanent building. But I don't want to stress out CAS, I don't want to stress ourselves out, I don't, I just want to make sure, kind of like what we do with the VFW, is we found, we relocated them in an area that they could be, you know, short, long-term, until we find a permanent solution. And so that was my ultimate goal. I had no idea.
I don't think there's an error.
Again, that's, I don't, I didn't want to go into that discussion. You know, if we can, if our staff comes back to us and says, "There's not anything," then that's our solution. But I can't say with certainty because we have not directed our staff to go do that. So they can't not bring anything back to me and say, "There's not there." You know, give them a week or two, give them until the beginning of March, look into that, and then they can bring a solution, or they can even come back and say, "No, there's nothing we can do." And then in the meantime, we'll just coordinate a calendar is my hope. But that's all I wanted to do. I was just trying to find, you know, a solution until we can get a building. That way, it's just your own space. That way, there is no city, it's a space that you guys have just for yourself. I know you guys have stuff in the crew center that you could take to the building, you have everything that you need, you have the tables, you have the chairs, and let us try to help you. Let us try to find that solution. Don't feel like we're kicking you out because that's not it. Everybody knows that building probably needs a lot of work. It would make more sense for you guys to be somewhere more short-term permanent, if that makes sense, until we can finally decide how we're going to move forward with the center.
All right, comments, questions? Councilwoman Heiser.
Yeah, if I may ask Jerry a question here. Jerry, the first part of this agenda item here, to temporarily relocate CAS until funding for a permanent space is found, how is, do you see that being any different than what's already taking place and has been for six weeks now?
I'm sorry, I couldn't walk and listen at the same time. What was your question?
So the first half of the agenda item here.
There's irony there.
Where relocate CAS until funding for a permanent space is found. Is that, do you see that as being any different than what's already been taking place, you know, led by efforts you've taken?
Sure. For the record, Jerry Hendricks, interim city manager. For the record, that I've been working with CAS almost since I got here, and they are as close to my heart as anybody anywhere. And we've been looking most of that time to find a place suitable for them, and that continues. And I've tasked Mariana and her staff to help me locate some places, and I've promised CAS that I'm not going to put them, or the city's not going to put them anywhere that doesn't fit their needs and that they're not happy with. So any, any place we find, after we find it, the next people to look at is going to be CAS. So that's an ongoing project for us.
So if this, the first half of that passes, are you doing anything differently more than what you currently are doing?
If I can work harder at it, we'll work harder at it.
So, no, okay. Okay. And just a quick comment in regards to the shared calendar. If, you know, as we talk this out, one thing that I would, you know, feedback that I've gotten from CAS is, I've developed a relationship, is understanding that they don't have access to the city calendar, is that the city has access to their calendar for scheduling purposes, but they don't have access to the city's calendar in advance of their scheduling meeting. So if that's something that we could accommodate for them, that could be very helpful for their ability to schedule and try to anticipate conflict in the calendar. And then the one other thing would be overlap time, like scheduling, so if something's from 1 to 3, we're not, the next event in that, in the building isn't starting at 3, is that there is a buffer time so that either they, if you guys need to clean up after lunch, that you have the appropriate time to do that, if the tables and chairs need to be moved, that there is appropriate time to do that. That just seemed to be things that are important, at least right now. If, so, thank you.
Councilmember Parsley.
Thank you. So do we have any sort of policy and procedures for the people that use the building when CAS is not there or whenever we rent it?
Yes, ma'am.
So we do have one? Okay. Because I appreciate enjoying lunch some Tuesdays when I'm able to go with them, and so one of the concerns we were hearing about today, you know, besides the calendar, I was wondering if staff could work with the CAS members to maybe lock some dates, like the Christmas party. That way, nothing else gets scheduled for the crew center during the day that they want to have the Christmas party. If there are any important dates that the CAS members would like to block, to work with our city staff in order to get those blocked, and that way, there is nothing that will overlap the important events that you guys have. I don't know if that's a possibility. I know that the city has like more availability to the room, but I do not want for them to miss on a Christmas party because we have something added to that. So I don't know if there needs to be better communication and if, you know, the city needs to add something to the calendar that that gets communicated to them right away and maybe, you know, talk on compromising sometimes, since they don't have their own space, and I do know they have a full calendar of activities, so.
Yes, ma'am, we'll certainly look into that.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you. I think it'd be really solved, the whole issue is that I think both can coexist, but you got to have conversation to better your communication. I think calendars come out every year in January. My suggestion would be is for CAS and the city and the parks to sit down the first week of January and plan out their year and block off those dates. And if November is the second week for Thanksgiving, you block it off and it's timed in there. Same thing for something else. It's just a matter of courtesy from both ends, but both of y'all coming together and deciding on dates and sticking to them. It's about the only thing. I think what I'm seeing or I'm hearing is we have these dates already pre-assigned, but then again, something comes up for the city at the last minute, oh, well, we need that after all, and it throws everything, a monkey wrench into everything. My suggestion will be, again, meet the first week in January, plan out your year, that way, everything is precise, and then there's no, there's no issue as far as dates going forward. And then that way, it's six months planned in advance, they can get their caterers, they can get their places and so forth. Mariana can be able to get their vendors up and running, and they would have an idea of when the 25 Days of Christmas comes, CAS already knows that at certain times, we're going to be able to not, you'd be able to utilize that for certain types of during the day. And I think it would just really solve that issue there if y'all just, both y'all, together at the beginning of the year, formulate those dates, and then just make it concrete, these belong to us, these belong to you, and then that way, it could just move forward on that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Councilmember Floris Cale.
Thank you. I just, do they meet currently? Is there, is Mariana here? Can I ask her? Yeah, I'm sorry.
I think they actually currently meet monthly to review the calendar, but we still have the issue of things that come up that need to be adjusted, and that's something that we're going to work on to make sure that it's less intrusive on CAS's activities.
Okay, I just, I just want to make sure, because to have that good communication, everybody has to communicate, and I get that, but I remember at least there being one, at least one meeting already this year, and it's only February, so I don't want to just blame all one side, or, you know, I want to make it fair and balanced. And so again, I understand people probably think that if you just communicate, everything will be okay, but that's not the reality. The truth is, some people both might want it for Christmas, both may want it for Thanksgiving, both may want it for certain holidays, and so that's why my assumption was, it would be better, even for, especially for CAS, just have your own area that's big enough to suit you. And I know some people think that's already being done, but clearly it's not. I don't remember a time where council directed staff to go out and actively look for this place. And maybe it is done, and I just don't know about it, but my hope was that if council directed you, it would be something that you guys would dedicate your time to, and that way, we could give them their own space. And I am by no means going to put them somewhere that's less than what they have now, whether it be square footage or just the way it looks. I would hope that we would put them in something nicer. So that would be my hope. I don't know if anybody else has anything to say, but if not, then I would like to make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number 44.
I would like to say one more thing.
Hang on, there's a motion on the table to approve Agenda Item Number 44. Is there a second? All right, all right, motion fails for lack of a second. That being said, I don't think that it's, I don't think that it's bad to pursue, the pursuit of the relocation. It's the temporary, I think, that's causing everyone the issue, to temporarily relocate them. I think that's probably what the issue is in the, it's in the, it's in your agenda language.
So what, so what is it that we could do differently then? Because I guess it's.
Well, I think if you direct, if you want to direct staff to explore options for a future relocation, that might be okay, but it's the, what your language says here probably would lead staff to believe that they needed to relocate them.
Okay, all right, that's a good point. Can I, I'd like to make a motion to direct staff to find.
Explore options for a future senior center.
To explore options for a future senior center.
Does it have to be in Kyle?
Could be in Hayes County.
Yeah. All right, that's the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion by Councilmember Floris Cale, second by Councilmember Zuniga. Is there discussion on that motion? Councilwoman Heiser.
Yeah, if there's just a couple of things to add to it, in, again, talking to CAS members, we discovered that there are grants available for, if the new facility could be a disaster relief facility, also a warming center, so anything emergency services related, so if there's, if that's something you guys could look into as well, I would appreciate it, and I think it would kind of help chip away at that total dollar figure that we need to try to hit in order to get them that new building.
All right, is there any other discussion? I just, I will say that we're getting ready to make some switches and maneuvers with properties all over, so this is a good year for us to explore it and to see what we can come up with, but I do, I do agree that we need to find the solution first before we look at the relocation. need to find the solution first before we look at the relocation. So is there a discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right. Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you, Ms. Floris Kael.
Thank you, Mayor Mitchell.
Okay. All right. Do y'all want to go ahead and do the, the two development deals before we go back? Or do you want to do, get, just get back on track and, and flow through it until we finish?
So like number 12 and then go down?
Yeah, it'd be 12, 13 consent, and then it would be the development deals. All right. Next up, Agenda Item 12, City Manager's Report.
Mayor Council, for the record, Jerry Hendricks, interim city manager. First up in my city manager's report tonight is Mariana Espinoza.
Mariana Espinoza, Parks and Recreation Director. So we have one more splash pad open house that is going to be next Monday here in City Hall from 5:30 to 7:00. And it is a drop and go. So residents can come in, see splash pad designs and give their input on design features they would like to see. This Friday, we have our Valentine's Dance for Individuals with Disabilities. It is Friday, February 10th, from 6:00 to 8:00 at Gemstone Palace. It is free and open to the public, open for all ages. And then this Saturday, we have our Paint and Sit Program from 11:00 to 1:00 at Miracal Hartson Park. There are currently five spaces left and registration is online. And then we are still accepting registrations until this Friday for the Cornhole Tournament, which will be held February 18th at 10:00 AM at Ash Privet Land. And that's it.
Thank you, Mariana. Next is Colleen Tierney, our Director of Library Services.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council, Colleen Tierney, Director of Library Services for the record. We have some events going on this month for the Black History Month at the library. Every Saturday, we're having Black History Month Story Times, and we have guest readers coming, and there'll be some activities for the kids as well. They're at different times each Saturday to kind of give people different options. This Saturday is at 10:30, the following Saturday is at 3:00, and the last Saturday of February is at 2:00. We have social media posts many a week highlighting fabulous black authors this month. Also, we have a Black History Month display and an Afrofuturism display that is highlighted with a beautiful piece of artwork that one of our staff members did on Afrofuturism. And Afrofuturism, for those of you who aren't aware, is a genre and idea that addresses cultural issues and concerns of the African diaspora through technoculture and science fiction, kind of like Black Panther. Afrofuturism is about creating art out of pain, strength, loss, and success. But it is fundamentally rooted in being denied a full history and looking to future, to the future to correct that. So that's, we have a really awesome selection of Afrofuturism books in the library. And also, we were recently, the Health Department dropped off many boxes of free COVID tests. So if anyone needs a free COVID test, we have a lot to go around. I hope that we won't need them very much, but just in case, we have a lot of free COVID tests. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Colleen. Next up is our Director of Communications, Rachel Soyner.
Hello, Council. So we will be having our Dialogue for Peace and Progress celebrating Black History Month on Friday, February 17th, from 7:00 to 8:30 PM right here in City Hall. But it will also be live streamed on our Facebook page, on our YouTube, and on Kyle 10 for anyone that can't make it in person. And it will be recorded and available for watching afterwards there also. Kyle Arts and Cultural Commission Chair, Dr. Verdesa Westbrook, will be moderating the panel. She's back there right now. And yeah, we're really looking forward to it. We have great seven panelists selected. And then we also have coming up, Simon Middle School students have put together an art exhibition that will be in City Hall. It is going up this Friday and will be available to the public starting Monday, February 13th, all the way through Friday, February 24th. It is their perspectives on Black History Month. We will also be holding a small art reception for the students and their parents right before the Dialogue for Peace and Progress on Friday, February 17th. And then last but not least, our 2023 Community Survey is now live. This year, we are doing it a bit differently. Back in January, council approved a partnership with Zen City. They will be conducting our community survey with, for us this year. They will be using digital ads. I have kind of a mock-up of what one might look like on the right hand of the screen. These will be going out through digital ads, Facebook, Instagram, Google, all sorts of places. And the very cool thing about this is that they are certified statistically significant results. They take our census data, make sure to really reflect our demographics of age, race, ethnicity, those sorts of things, so that we are really getting a good picture of our community all over. But for anyone that does not see the ads, that would still like to take the survey, they can go to citykyle.com/survey. The survey will be available there through the rest of the year. We are expecting our first report from Zen City sometime in July. That will give us some of those analytic results, breakdown by districts, all sorts of really cool stuff. So we're looking forward to that. But for more information about survey methodology, anything like that, we have a lot of info at citykyle.com/survey.
Okay. Can I, sorry. Before you sit down, is there any way you can get Maxine's phone number?
Oh, yeah, actually, I already grabbed.
Awesome. All right.
Whenever y'all ask right after.
Thank you.
I'm going to coordinate with her tomorrow and see if we can get something going.
That would be awesome. All right. I'd love to see you guys out there. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. Next up is Will Atkinson, our Director of Planning.
Will Atkinson, Director of Planning, for the record, have a couple of updates for you tonight. Related to our Comprehensive Plan update, we are going to have a combined Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council workshop on Monday, the 13th, right here in the council chambers. It'll be from 6:00 to 9:00. The first half of that event will be an open house for the community to come and get a better understanding of what we're doing for our comprehensive plan. And then the second half will be the actual workshop where Verdunity has a presentation to explain to you the whole approach that we are coordinating. On Wednesday, the 15th, from 12:00 to 3:00, we are having an open house at Fire Station Number Two, which is right across from the Hampton Inn on Button Creek Road. That's for the people that can make, only make open houses during the day specifically, but the entire public is absolutely welcome to it. And in that evening, we have four different locations simultaneously going on for the same presentation for our Comprehensive Plan Outreach. One of them's going to be right here at City Hall. We're going to be at Barton Middle School, Science Hall Elementary, and Tobias Elementary as well, from 5:00 to 8:00. So we, we absolutely encourage the community to come out and take advantage of all these events. We want as much public input as we possibly can, so the community can be involved. Right now, survey number two for the Comprehensive Plan is live. They're looking for a little bit more specific feedback from, versus what survey number one was. And as you can see on the screen right there. And then we also have an interactive map tool that the City of Kyle, or that we have launched related to that, associated with the surveys and for the kyle2030.com process as well. For the Downtown Master Plan, as a reiteration, on February the 23rd, we have an open house, the last one we plan to host, from 5:00 to 8:00, right here at Kyle City Hall. And we want everybody, residents, to come out and visit and see what we have in store for the draft document that we have in place right now. And we are also going to be launching the Downtown Master Plan Survey specifically related to that from February 9th through March the 2nd, for those who cannot attend in person. That's all I have.
I have a quick question. Did you guys talk about the Valentine's Dance for Individuals with Disabilities already? I saw you, I was outside. So I just wanted to say thank you to our Parks Department for working with Radical Church and that collaboration. I am super excited to go and volunteer. And I wanted to thank Radical for what you guys are doing and working with the city and volunteering. So I'll be there. I'm super excited about that. I just wanted to drop that.
What I have to say is not very important, but I want to say I do like your haircut.
Oh, thank you.
And I'm really proud of the way you have grown. I feel like we're looking at a different person right now. And so thank you for, you're great with your emails. And I see tremendous growth in you. And, and you got a nice haircut. So thanks.
Thank you.
No, I'm jealous. I liked it the way that it was.
Right?
I'll agree to that. I also needed a haircut. It was about time. So.
Thank you, Will.
Thank you.
Mayor Council, next up is me, Jerry Hendricks, interim city manager, for the record. For our Team Kyle update, first, I'd like to recognize our lead telecommunications, our former lead telecommunications officer, April Machado. She's been promoted to our Emergency Communications Supervisor, very important position in our dispatch. April's got more than 13 years of experience as a telecommunications officer. She's been working with KPD since 2010, was with the Sheriff's Department prior to that. She holds a Master Telecommunicator Certificate from TECO and has served as a lead TCO at KPD for several years. So congratulations to April on her promotion. Will be working to backfill the position she came from. From our, our Stormwater Drainage Department Tech One, Adrian Gonzalez, has recently promoted to Stormwater Crew Leader. Adrian's been with us since 2014, transferred to Public Works as a Stormwater Drainage Tech One in 2017. He's proven himself to be a hard worker, a strong asset to our Storm Drainage Department. He's going to do great things where he is now. New members of Team Kyle include Ronnie Perez with our, as a police cadet going through our training program, Jared Hand with our IT Application Support Analyst, Joseph Figuera with our Environmental Services Tech One, Stephen Bales is an Environmental Services Tech One, Stephen Fairchild is a Utility Tech Two with our Wastewater Department, Ruben Luna is a park, a new Parks Maintenance Technician, Nicholas Garza is also a Park Maintenance Technician, Amber Arnold is our Records Retention Clerk, sitting in our, with our City Secretary's Office and filling a need that we've had for a very long time with our records retention. And Carlos Franco is joining our team as a Utility Tech One with water. I'm also going to ad lib a little bit here, and I just wanted to do a shout out to all of Team Kyle and to our council and to our community for the response we had to the ice storm that we had last week. All of our departments stepped up, our Communications Department working around the clock, our Police Department working on our roads, and our Public Works Department. Everybody across the board and our community for listening to our advice and staying off the roads. Very, very little accidents on a very treacherous time to our partners with PEC. I will tell you that monitoring our, our community, our Emergency Services Coordinator was monitoring electric outages the whole time. We never had more than a handful of outages at any given time, and those outages were always resolved in three to five hours. So big hats off to PEC for the work that they're doing, TDS for really helping us out in our event last weekend and continuing, actually, right now to help us with disposing all the brush that we're getting, and particularly to our Parks Department, who dedicated their whole weekend to staffing our parks and taking who knows how much brush. We couldn't count at all. And so everybody really, really showed up on our team. And I just want to let you know that regarding the brush, we're going to be winding that down here in the next couple of days, reassessing the demand and the need, and then coming up with whatever our next plan may or may not be. That concludes my report, and I'm available for any questions.
All right. Councilmember Zuniga.
Yes. So thank you, Jerry, and City Kyle Public Works for the emergency response. I did notice the hard work everybody was putting in, animal control and picking up the brushes and, and all that. But I also want to just get back to the trash with the sewage that was left in the dumpster. So are we not going to use that new bridge entrance any longer for a pickup spot?
No.
Because that was the main.
We met with TDS today to identify that spot and make sure that they have access to be able to service it.
And then your email was just, it was used there because there had to be paving done in the proximity.
The usual collection of those dumpsters was displaced due to the constructions going on internal. That dumpster was only meant to be out there for a few hours.
Right.
With the ice storm, TDS is not able to service that dumpster for a couple of days.
Sure.
And we really regret the effect that had on the community.
Right.
And it will not happen again.
Well, I think the residents will be a lot, very happy to, very pleased to hear that.
And, and I'm happy to come out there with whatever staff would be appropriate and talk to them personally about that.
Okay. Good job. Thank you.
Councilmember Floris Kael.
Let me start with thank you. Because that's, that's huge. Accountability is big, and so I appreciate that. But really, why I wanted to speak was because I wanted to say that I really appreciate how staff came together and kind of heard what our residents were saying. And we provided a service that went above and beyond some of the surrounding areas. And when I went out there to visit different spots, not one employee complained. I did apologize because I was like, I was really trying to push for this, guys. And so I know it's your weekend. And they were like, no, this has to be done. And where nobody complained. There was no, like, it was a feeling of, like, camaraderie. And I just want to say thank you to everybody that was there and that I got a chance to talk to and, and communicate with. And so, and thank you to you too for setting up that TDS and making sure it was all taken care of. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Jerry. All right. Next up, Agenda Item 13, CIP Road Projects and Consent Agenda Presentation. Mr. Barba.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Leon Barba, City Engineer.
Is that the queue?
Well, I do have my, there we go. Thank you. We'll start off with La Veda Park. We're 81% complete. They're installing mechanical, electrical, and plumbing in the restrooms, pavilion restrooms. Still installing plumbing at the kids' area and reflecting pool. And they're also installing landscape irrigation lines, soils and mesh at the swing station and volleyball court. They're running electrical throughout the project, installing exterior toilet pavilion, mechanical ducted pavilion is being installed. They're still working on the playground dirt work and the landscape has been completed. Metal seam roofing has been completed. They're working on the decomposed granite that's been, being installed at the dog park, but that apparently has been completed. The substantial completion date is March of 2023. My understanding is that Mr. Mo Humble is here from Stoddard Construction to kind of explain their schedule.
I was just going to ask if he was here.
I wouldn't miss it for the world. Mayor, Council, questions?
I would, if you don't mind, I would like to know why the delay.
There are many, many factors for the delay. There's not a simple answer for that. I'm sure you realize the last few years, we've had problems with pandemic. That affected workforces basically countrywide. That affected production, sourcing, materials, delivery, transportation. We've been fighting this bear for a couple of years. It's something we're, we're not going to stop fighting. One of the things that came to my ear that is maybe a concern of council is that someone may have asked, when is enough enough? And Stoddard Construction won't finish the project. Let me assure you guys, that's not in our DNA. We're losing money every day that we're down there. This is costing us a fortune. We'd like to be finished. We're trying to be finished. We're working diligently to be finished. But we've had a number of challenges come up that we're still meeting and we're still overcoming. I wanted to assure you guys in person that this company is not going to leave this project. We are going to finish this project. We're losing money every day we're there. And we will continue to lose money every day we're there until we're complete. When are we going to be complete? Right now, our schedule shows us being complete at the end of March. That schedule was produced with a scheduled data date of January 25th. We've now had an ice storm. We've now had an ice storm. It's raining this week. I've got concrete on that site that I've had ready to place for two weeks, three weeks, that is going to be yet again postponed. There's nothing I can do about it. I can't place concrete in the mud. There's been times we can't even get the trucks on the site. So, I wish I could come to you and give you just a simple, one reason for why this is taking us so long. Unfortunately, there's a number of reasons. We're doing the best we can to meet these challenges. We have not backed away from this project. We have never not staffed the project, and we are going to continue this project and bring it in and complete it, regardless of the cost that we're having to deal with. Other than that, I don't know much what else I could say.
Do you have any other projects you're currently working that you are as delayed as La Verda is?
Yeah, the library in New Braunfels has had the same problems. We've had the same issues on that project. We've got a community library in New Braunfels, Texas, the West Side Community Library. We've had the same problems with that. Interestingly, these projects kicked off, not exactly, but approximately the same time. So, this is just something we've learned we have to deal with. There's been, there's been so many challenges on this thing that I just, I can't even tell you. It's, you know, I spend my days working on this a lot, so.
Part of my concern, this is a park, we had two projects finishing basically on time, almost on time, including Public Safety Center, which is a huge project, and I don't think it has been as delayed as this park.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to understand.
I wish I could give you a better answer, and I wish I could give you a better understanding. Like I said, the things that have affected us have to do with our manufacturing, our sourcing, our manpower, even our subcontractors. This filters all the way down, excuse me, filters all the way down to the actual crews that do the work. I can use an example. Right now, I'm coordinating with the city parks department to plant some trees. Are you guys aware of this? The TDS trees, right? Well, guys, we started this, I want to say, the 10th of January. We don't have any trees in the ground yet. I'm not looking at the parks department as though it's something they're not doing. They're stuck just like me as far as weather. There's so many variables that we deal with in these projects, and we sort through them as quick as we can. As far as, to use the trees as an example, one of the things that impacts us there is we're holding off certain work to get these trees in. Because if we place the concrete that's ultimately going to be placed and the trees, the delivery trucks drive across this concrete, it's going to break the concrete. We're kind of in a position where we have to be, we have to be very aware of how the coordination works and what will cost money going forward. We can't afford to put something in and have it broken and have to go back and repair it. Part of that is this coordination thing. So, every subcontractor we've dealt with for the last couple of years has had some sort of issue, whether it's supply, manpower, or just being sick. We've lost full crews for periods of time. As far as, oh, nice picture. Didn't realize you had that. Again, I just, I want to assure you guys, we haven't stopped. We haven't given up. We're fighting the battle day after day, and we're not going to leave until this thing is finished. That being said, we've now been affected by weather again for two weeks after the last schedule was put out. Will that have an effect on the project? Yes, it will. So, I encourage you all to come around and walk the site when you have a chance. Take a look at what's been done. I'm very proud of what we've been able to get completed. I'm very frustrated with the things that aren't complete. But we are not going to stop, and that's the best I can tell you at this point.
Councilor Floris Kill.
All right. First of all, I want to say thank you for coming and speaking. I appreciate that. I know it can't be a real comfortable place. But with that said, are you like the second or third?
I'm the number two, ma'am. I'm operations manager for Stoddard Construction.
Okay. Who was in charge of building those apartments?
SkyBeck. The apartments across from the, I think it's SkyBeck Construction.
Okay, because my concern is those apartments went up pretty fast, and there was enough materials for that, and so I'm just.
Perception and reality are maybe a little bit different because I have inside information on how those were constructed, and those weren't a problem-free project either.
But they're done?
Not all of them.
All right, well, she's making a point.
Yeah, no, I get the point, but the point is.
Let her, let her continue, please. Thank you.
No, it's okay. So, my concern is, as a city, we've eventually got to figure out what we want to do as far as moving forward, right? And it ultimately would be easier if you guys said, we just can't finish this job. Then the city would know how to proceed. We would be like, okay, well, we can't, we'll figure it out.
Ultimately be easier, I'm sorry?
If you guys just said you couldn't finish the job.
And why would we say that?
That would allow us the opportunity to find somebody who could do it in a more timely fashion.
We're not about to say that. We can finish the job, and we're committed to finishing the job. And we have no plans whatsoever of leaving the job unfinished.
Totally understood. I got that. My concern is, I had a calendar date on my calendar that said we were going to have a groundbreaking on a certain date. And even though there was bad weather, I no doubt knew that that was going to be pushed back because it's been, well, if you know how long it's been.
Yes, ma'am.
And we're only 80% complete, so there's no way 20% is going to be done in a month or two, which is a reality, and I understand that. Can I ask, why is our parks department planting and digging trees?
Because someone in the, someone in the management group talked TDS into donating very large trees, and so the trees were removed from my scope, and they were given to the city, and the city accepted that scope because of the donation. And so, the city is digging the holes and planting the trees.
Well, they do have to probably be put in the ground within a certain timeframe. So my, and I don't know anything about the background. I'm just asking why our staff is being utilized when we have you contracted out, but I'm sure it has to be put in the ground within a certain timeframe as well, and so.
What has to be put in the ground?
The tree should probably be planted.
They're not on site yet. TDS hasn't even delivered them.
Okay, so you guys didn't even dig the holes?
Your parks department has dug the holes, and they've been sitting there for two weeks now.
The holes have been there for two weeks.
I've got large holes sitting on the site empty for two weeks because they can't do anything because of weather.
Well, we've only had one week of bad weather. Let me confirm that.
Well.
We were, I was at home with my kids.
We had rain the week before, and then we had ice, and then we're having rain again this week.
Understood. Yeah, we had rain today.
It's killing us.
The rain, look, I understand, and we could go round and round, but.
Let's, yeah, let's try to move it forward.
To answer your question, why is Parks involved? Because the city accepted a donation for these large trees, and they were removed from our scope of work.
Yeah, I guess my question would be, why were they removed from your scope of work?
Because it saved the city money, and you guys got a change. I don't have the numbers in front of me, but you got a significant change order for removing that as part of our scope of work and turning it into an owner-provided donation item.
Okay, well, I guess unfortunately, this was not as beneficial as I felt it was going to be. I was hoping we'd get some foreclosure, but can you, can you tell us the completion date that Stoddard is giving the city, even with the rain delays? And just let's be clear, it's going to rain probably. Let's just add another week.
Yeah. Right now, we're projecting, their last projection was the end of March. We've already been, since that projection was put out, we've already been hammered by, basically, it's going to be two more weeks of rain on our critical path because our critical path is concrete. So, probably, it's going to be April because I can't see any way to move it up. We're working our weekends. We're loading the site up. We're doing everything that we can do. But I do not see this coming in before then.
So, you're saying April?
At this point, after the rain, the next update will show this rain impact on our job, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so what happens in June?
What happens in June? I don't know.
Well, I'm saying if it goes through June, what do you think as a city that we should do?
I can't make those decisions, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't care to make a guess for you. I think what we should do as Stoddard Construction, and what we have been doing, is staying focused on completing this as quickly as we can. So, I think the city should do what the city feels is in their best interest. I personally believe that it's in your best interest to allow us to finish because we're not going to willingly walk away from the project. We're here to finish it.
Thank you.
If there's some other action, then, you know, we'll have to take care of it.
All right, so I have a couple very quick comments, and then we're still in presentation mode, so there's not, it's not posted for action here, but a couple of quick comments. Number one is, I'm very empathetic to what is being said here. Obviously, this project has had delays. Mr. Humble?
Absolutely.
You're aware of some meetings that have taken place and some frustrations.
I was in them with you.
Yeah, so, but the thing I do want to say is that they have been, what they have been good on is, since we resolved our original conflicts with the change orders to increase the price, you have not come back with change orders, and every time the project keeps getting slipped, my question is always, is the cost increasing? Or are they going to, are they still committed to delivering on the current budget allocation? And every time the answer comes back, they're going to complete it on budget. So, that's really helpful to me. And then, the other thing is, the majority of those apartments still aren't finished, and so, I do think that over time, I think we're lucky that it's not in a highly trafficked area. It's an area that has a little bit more of a window for completion. And then, the last thing I just want to say is, right now, I'm thinking, I'm just wondering if you're going to beat the Public Safety Center at all.
I don't know.
And no, I'm serious, and I think it would be to your enduring shame if you at Bartlett Cock beat you on a $37 million Public Safety Center. And so, that's really the.
Oh, I've got skin in this game, so yeah.
I know you do.
There's a lot of emotion also in this, so I'm with you.
There is, and so, and we've been around, and so, there's, I could argue with some of the things that you said. Some of the things you said are valid. I'm not sure that's the whole point, but so long as you're still committed to completing this project, which I do appreciate because I do think it would cost even more delays in money if we were to try to change at this point. So, I'm still personally committed to seeing it through. We've had our chances to part ways. Y'all tried really hard to stick with the project, so I do appreciate that. But obviously, you can understand why we're very frustrated because you started at the same time as Heroes Memorial Park, which is a more expensive, more complicated project. They completed it on time. So, it's hard for us to hear some of those arguments that are being made, but that's really all there is. I don't know that we can accomplish anything more on La Verda other than saying what, those questions are all very valid.
Well, I'd certainly accept the frustration that you guys are expressing. I feel it too. I'm so want to be done with this project.
Is this a picture? How, when was this taken, this picture?
Today. Yesterday.
Oh, it's on top, sorry. What exactly is going to be green about this park?
What ex, I'm sorry?
Because it's called La Verda. I don't see any green features in there.
Well, I mean, it's not finished.
That's not, is that 80%?
Oh, okay, what's going to be green? Well, hmm, the big center area there that looks like it's got the pond in it right now.
Okay.
Because it does have a pond in it right now. That's going to be the lawn area. That's the big lawn area. And the building down at the far end of that, what you're seeing is the pavilion. That's the stage area.
Okay.
And so, what you're looking at is a big lawn area that looks towards the stage pavilion. And then, the, in the foreground here, you see the kids' area there. That's, that won't be green, but that's going to be covered with mulch, so it'll have a wood-ish color finish to it.
I was just curious. Thank you.
Yeah, that's.
Councilor Zuniga.
Yes, sir. Thank you also for speaking, and I know everyone's rushing for time, 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 but a quality product, which I'm sure you will deliver, that's really the goal here. Make it quality because we're going to have to live with it. So, I hear the, I hear the time, 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 but let's also understand we want quality and a beautiful project for the city.
Yes, sir. You can count on that.
Right. So, I don't, I don't want you to feel like, go rush, rush, rush.
Well, and, well, no. Part of the, part of the delays have been.
It's the balance.
Yeah.
Have, part of the delays have been because we want to make sure that the standards and the design is met. So, that's where some of the, they've had to go back and fix some work in the past.
We've had to go back and do some punch work.
And I totally understand pouring concrete and seeing cracked concrete. That's not a good thing, so.
All right.
So, you've got to be sensitive.
All right, thank you, Mr. Humble. Appreciate it. No, go.
Thank you, sir.
Before I look to see if they're holding their hands up. Let's go.
Thank you, sir.
Moving on to the Public Safety Center, we're about 76% complete. They're still continuing to paint on levels one and two, and they're installing overhead lights on level one and two also. They're also installing second-story aluminum railing, and they're still working on the tile installation in the restrooms on level two. The expected completion date on that is May of 2023. Wastewater Treatment Expansion Project, we're at about 99% complete. We're still waiting on those variable frequency drives. They haven't given us a ship date yet, so that's kind of holding us up. We're still working on the outer plant roads. Bullseye Plant Number One will be back online pending approval of change order number six. That's going to be consent agenda item number 19. We've already issued a substantial completion punch list, so we're getting ready to wrap this project up.
Councilor. How did, number 19, can you tell us how that broke?
How that?
Was there something that?
Yes, I'm going to have it at the end.
Okay, all right, thank you.
On this picture, you can actually see where the roads that have been paved and the roads that have not been paved yet, but because of the weather, we've been holding off on trying to do any paving in there. Those are the outer roads that you're looking at. South Side Wastewater Improv Project, we're 91% complete. We're working on the punch lifts for the lift station, very minor stuff. We have, did identify a sag in one of the wastewater lines, so it has to be redone. It's right there at 23971 935 Frontage Road. They have, as we mentioned earlier, the weather's been slowing us down also. We're expecting to wrap that up in March, hopefully. Elliot Branch Interceptor, we're 93% complete. Roads have been opened. Public's using the roads now. Removing traffic signs. We're going to have a walkthrough on the February 15th, and we're still cleaning out the project. So, we're almost at the end on this project also. Downtown Relocation of Overhead Lines, if you checked the area recently, there's been about 10 poles removed, so you can start seeing it to clear up. According to the project manager, we have about 15 more poles to take down. Kind of waiting on PEC, but as you know, they're probably busy right now with some other things they're working on. Oppost Road County's just about wrapped up their section of it, their work that they're doing out there. They have one more section of concrete to pour, and they have some ditch work to do, and then, that will be turned over to the city for the final lift of paving and some striping. Indian Paintbrush Lift Station, we're about 43% complete. They're removing forms from the wet well roof slab. They're installing some mechanical piping inside the wet well, and the backfill's going to be done over the next couple of weeks. Again, this project slowed down because of the rain and freeze that we had recently. Center Street Village Wastewater Line Phase One, that's 99% complete. We're wrapping it up with a punch list, and all that's remaining is the vegetation, revegetation on the site. On consent agenda items, we have number 19. We're increasing the contract by $144,154. This is for some work that's going to be done at the, we're installing a portable, non-potable water intake pump, pump repairs and adjustments to valve and piping at the expansion at the plant. Do you have a question, councilmember, on that?
Yeah, could you explain? Yeah, could you explain? Was there, was there, it says repairs, could you tell me what kind of repair that was?
There were some repairs to the pump, apparently they were doing some testing, I'm thinking that's what you're asking about, there was some testing that was being done and somebody forgot to turn the pumps back on. And what happened is that they went ahead and started using that facility and then there were some damages that were done in there because they didn't turn that pump back on. And so in negotiations with the contractor in the city, there was kind of a dual responsibility there, so we're sharing the costs with the contractor on that one.
Okay, thank you.
I had a question about that too, Leon. So do we have sufficient sensors and alarms in these pump systems that would help us prevent these kind of failures or operator errors? Because obviously, it's a very expensive lift station pump that needs again installed, but do we have enough of these emergency valves or sensors in line? I mean, would, to prevent pumps from breaking?
We have a very robust SCADA system. SCADA is Supervisory Controls and Data Acquisition, that's what the acronym stands for, but Public Works, if Tem's here, he could probably explain all the controls that they have on the system, but that's the only way we can handle this system, because things happen at the wrong time of the day, at night.
Yeah.
And so we have to have those controls in place so we can respond as quickly as we can. But yes, we have quite a few controls and that's monitored by the Public Works Department.
Okay, that was the only question about that.
I have a question about First Street. So I'm really glad to see the Third Street and Sledge fixed because that's one of the roads that the residents were complaining about. I did see a sign down on First Street, was that brought back up? I think I have a picture of it. Yeah, let me pull it up.
Okay.
I was just wondering if that got repaired too, when you guys finished paving?
Was that in the last slide?
It's, no, 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 when you're talking about this ledge in the third.
Keep going, yeah.
Yeah, I believe I saw, it's right here, the one that says West Allen, gross, but that's not on First, I'm sorry. Are those signs being repaired? Do you know, they were by the same roads that were being, getting fixed?
Are those street signs?
Mm-hmm.
I'll have to check into that, councilmember.
Okay.
What was the location?
It says south, it's G, gross, gruse, I don't know how you say that. And then West Allen, those signs were on the ground.
Okay.
And then I do see some damage to First Street, did that get repaired too?
There's some work that was done in that direction, but I'm not sure if that's part of the work that was caused by our project, so we'll have to check. If you could get us the location.
Yeah, it was that intersection.
Remember, they're going to do a punch list on the whole project, so hopefully we'll pick it all up.
Okay.
Get that taken care of.
Okay, I will drive and with better location, but I believe that was First Street, thank
Questions, any more questions?
All right, thank you, Leon.
Thank you.
All right, next up is the Consent Agenda, there's been a request to pull 17 and 20, and we'll just leave those off and staff can bring those back. Does anybody have any other items they wish to remove? Council, Mayor Protim.
Item number 25.
Yes, I forgot that. All right, anyone else? All right, motions?
Oh. Nope, that's fine.
All right, Councilwoman Floris Kell.
Thank you, I would like to make a motion to approve Agenda Items 14, 15, 16, 18, 19, 21, 22, 23, and 24.
Wait.
Yep, that's what I got.
Yes.
Second, all right, motion by Councilmember Floris Kell, seconded by the mayor, that we approve Agenda Items 14, 15, 16, 18, 19, 21, 22, 23, and 24, is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Our motion carries seven to zero. All right, we'll pull up Agenda Item 25, approve the renewal contract with Kyle Park Music, Inc., Fredericksburg, Texas, and amount not to exceed 50,000 for brand ambassador efforts. This is Ms. Rachel Sonier's item, Mayor Protim.
Yes, Ms. Rachel, if you wanted to.
Hello, Council, Rachel Sonier, Director of Communications, for the record.
Bless you.
Sorry, just making sure I have my notes available. All right, so I'm going to give you a brief presentation and open it up for any questions y'all have or anything.
Do you want to go through the presentation, Mayor Protim?
Oh, yeah, sorry, if you have questions.
Or do you have, you have some comments or?
I, if you want to go and do the presentation, but I, that way we can have a discussion on that if you want.
Okay, all right.
The presentation. All right, so basically, this is a renewal of the contract that was passed in October 2021 by Kyle City Council. The original contract was negotiated by city manager and former director of communications at that time Samantha Armbruster, as well as our former special events manager Sarah Watson. So essentially, we kind of picked up this contract and used the previous contract from 2021 as a blueprint for building the contract we have before you now. And the first contract that was approved in 2021, we had some very broad concepts for it, such as family-friendly, clean city, parks, trails, rivers. And with those kind of broad concepts, we were able to produce approximately 15 videos promoting events like National Pie Day and National Pie Day in March, Founder's Parade, Santa's Arrival, Market Days, Movies in the Park, Family Skate Night, and more. We were also, within those 15 videos, able to produce tours of seven city parks, including Mary Kyle Hartson, Steeplechase Park, Greg Clark Park, Button Creek Park, Cool Springs Park, Lake Kyle Park, and Water Leaf Park, which are all available on Kyle10 and our YouTube. And also, as a part of the previous contract, we received the writing and recording of a jingle for the city of Kyle that we plan to use with the video promotion of future vibe trail. Just some insights from our October 2021 until October 2022 for the entire contract from the previous year. Between the 16 projects that we collaborated on with Kyle Park's team, we got approximately 157,614 reach slash impressions on our social channels slash Kyle Park's social channels, 36,547 views, and 6,356 engagements in total. And then over to the right, we have his current followings on his different channels as well. Key changes in the contract from this year and the previous contract from 2021, the removal of the writing of the jingle, since it has already been produced, we're just essentially waiting to launch it with the vibe trail. All videos produced by the city of Kyle will be filmed in four separate days throughout the year and will not exceed eight hours per day for a max of 32 hours of filming in the city. That's actually an eight-hour increase over last year's contract, which only included 24 hours of filming in the city. The city of Kyle will reserve all rights to the videos for 10 years after the contract ends. The first contract actually did not reserve any rights for the city after the contract ended, so we wanted to make sure to amend that in this contract. And then this contract will also include production meetings where city of Kyle produce videos and content so that we can make the best use of all of those filming hours within the city of Kyle. This is the video schedule we've laid out with the Kyle Park team if tonight's contract is approved. Essentially, February, he would be promoting on Valentine's Day in front of the I Love Pie So Much mural in downtown Kyle. Pie Day in March for 3.14, he would be promoting our Pirate Treasure Hunt, which is just around the corner. And then in April, we would be planning an April Fools' video or photo of some sort. May, a Kyle Fair, we have a video that we're working on called the Kyle, Call of the Kyles for the Kyle Gathering, which is the world record attempt we do every year. And then for July, or sorry, for June, we would be promoting our July 4th event, so we're going to shoot a video with Kyle Park for that, as well as National Pard Month in July. We would like to use Kyle Park as the Kyle Park's spokesperson, essentially, would be the idea. And in August, promoting Pie in the Sky, September, Founder's Parade, October, Center Street Trick or Treat, and November, Santa's Arrival, December, 25 Days of Christmas, and then January, National Pie Day. That concludes my presentation, but I am open for any questions.
Yes, thank you, mayor. Thank you, Rachel, for the presentation, because I wanted, basically, the people who didn't know we actually had this person that we had a contract with have an idea of what it was about. I think at the time, when we were trying to look at something to market, a lot of our legacy projects that we have coming up, like La Verde and everything else, this idea came to fruition on this end. But I just feel as we're growing and with our IT department and respect with them and the great job they did, especially with the Grinch.
Oh, you mean Grant with the videos?
Yeah, Grant with the video, that we could maybe look at a different direction on that end, as far as maybe promoting our city, maybe using residents, maybe using staff, so forth on that end. So as much as, I'm sure this person did a great job, I would have to just go ahead and do this to where I could say, referencing Agenda Item Number 25, I want to make a motion to disapprove the renewal contract for Kyle Park to exceed the 50,000 of brand ambassador efforts.
Second.
All right, motion by Mayor Protim Tobias, seconded by Councilmember Parsley, is there discussion on the motion? I didn't realize this was on consent, I was of agreement as well, so.
Yes.
Is there further discussion on that? Main reason being that I think we are capable of doing this on our own, I didn't really like it last year either.
This was definitely an inherited thing, I'll definitely agree with that, it was an inherited kind of contract, but it was a part of the approved 2023 budget, so that's why I brought it forth again and worked to negotiate this out.
Well, and I have no doubt that y'all would have done an amazing job with it, and I think last year's, I think they did a good job last year, obviously, it's just, it's not needed. We can, we can, we can market just as well with the impressions and reach that we received just from our communications department.
And with this budget here, it could actually go back to our general fund, or if it needs to be used for other resources, I think that would be best used, since we're going to be talking about budget.
I do think a better resource for that, if we wanted to keep it within communications, would be to increase our special events marketing budget, which only sits at $10,000 currently.
Wow, there you go.
I agree.
And very limits our ability to reach out.
I agree with that. I think you guys have done such an amazing job just by yourself, I know Grant is like a master of making videos, I mean, nothing went more viral than the Grinch videos, so if you want to buy a new outfit for the Grinch, so he can do the videos.
So do you want to amend your motion to direct those funds to go to the special events marketing budget?
Yes, ma'am. I would like to go ahead and amend my motion not only to disapprove the contract for Kyle Parks, but to add additional funding to the-
Special events budget.
-special events communications fund for-
Of 50,000.
For the 50,000.
Okay.
Second.
All right, motion by Mayor Protim, seconded by Councilmember Heiser, the motion is to amend, so we'll actually take this, we'll take this in two votes, but it's to amend the 50,000, actually, no, we'll take it in, we can take this in one vote, because the first motion is to disapprove, so we can't, we can't amend without, you know.
So go with the first motion?
Yes.
Yeah, I'd like to take in one motion and one vote, because we all understand what's being proposed here. Is there discussion on the motion? Councilman Zuniga.
Yeah, I mean, I love all the ideas, but I think we've had this conversation before, Rachel, I would love to see more money in the Kyle merchandise budget, because I would love to see more residents buying our own apparel to promote our own city everywhere they go and for visitors and friends who come to Kyle, take something with you and just show our city, the name everywhere you go, so.
Definitely.
Just consider that, I think our merchandise is lacking, so I would like to see-
I think this would help with those kind of ideas, if we were to do that, if we were to utilize some of those funds, if you were having the Easter egg hunt or you're having something like that, you get a commemorative item.
So not just events, but merchandise events.
So I think that would be under the Kyle Style Store, which I think is, is that technically housed under?
Maybe in a different department.
HR currently? Yeah, as long as it's, yeah, as it's clear.
I want you to keep it, I want you to keep this, right.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right, motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up is going to be Agenda Item 34. This is a reconsideration item, so the first. All right, so I wanted to make sure this item, so I'll pull Item 34 up, it's reconsider the vote for Items 29 and 30 from January 17, 2023, approve a development agreement between the City of Kyle and Plum Creek Developers LLC, Joe Brooks, and first reading and ordinance amending Chapter 53 of the City of Kyle, Texas, for the purpose of rezoning 18.84 acres of land from RS to PUD. And so the, this would be, the first vote is a motion and vote to reconsider, and then we will bring up the actual items to discuss there. So I'd like to make a motion to reconsider Agenda Item, or approve the reconsideration item.
34?
Yes, so motion by mayor, seconded by Councilwoman Zuniga, is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Aye.
All right, motion carries six to one, so now we'll bring up Agenda Items 35 and 36 together. Agenda Item 35 is approve a development agreement between the City of Kyle and Plum Creek Developers, Joe Brooks LLC. And Agenda Item 36 is an ordinance amending Chapter 53 of the City of Kyle, Texas, for the purpose of rezoning approximately 18.84 acres of land from retail services to planned unit development for property located at approximately 400 feet southwest of the intersection of Marketplace and City Lights Drive. This is being proposed by Councilmembers Heiser and Parsley. Would you all like to have the floor?
I can make a couple of comments, I don't know if you want to go first.
Well, I'll be quick. Yeah, so this was something that, the main concern that I had was traffic congestion in an area that I see a lot of kids riding their bikes to school, and with growth and more multifamily, you're only going to have more and more kids in the area. So this was something that I had asked for in terms of trying to make this more public safety friendly for those kids, given there's only sidewalks down Burleson on one side after, when you are south of the roundabout, just east, or west of 35. So that was my main concern, so I just wanted to lay that out there as to why I wanted to reconsider my position on this. And, yeah, thank you.
I'm pretty sure you would say why is she bringing this back, especially rezoning from retail to BUD, just in case that the question arises. If you see the zoning around this area, there is plenty of retail, plenty, actually not as many apartments. So this developer also has agreed to have a rainwater reclamation element, which I really appreciate Mr. Brooks for taking that into consideration, and that is in hopes to offer at least some relief toward water and wastewater issue, which has been brought up several times in here. Also, he was very open to using landscaping designs that do not require as much watering, and although we discussed the use of artificial turf, that by the way, I did read, and I shared this with staff, several sites that the use of artificial turf does help reduce the water usage 40 gallons per square foot per year, so I know there was another development mentioned that that was not true, I will encourage you to read a couple of articles. And then these particular developments, since he was in the floodplain, it's something that staff may address as not being the best landscaping, the artificial turf may not be the best use for a type of landscaping. So besides this, I knew that the sign that Mr. Brooks had proposed was great, what he brought up was amazing, it's actually that I would like to move in there, that's the kind of designs that I would like to see in Kyle, so those are my points to consider in this, plus there's a couple of other things that you added, which is why I reconsider my vote for this item.
Okay, so the changes that, Councilmember Zuniga, go ahead.
I'd like to call the question.
Well, we got to have a, we got to have a motion on the floor first. So the changes that you mentioned are recommended changes, but they are not in the original development agreement, but they are in the posted backup.
Yes.
So to be clear, all the proposed changes that have been proposed, that have been discussed here, are what we would be voting on if we're reconsidering. And I just want to confirm that, because we're reconsidering the items from before, but there have been changes to the development agreement that incorporate the architectural standards, as well as reclamation element and all that, and that has been posted and noticed in the backup material. So if we make the motion, we want to make it as amended in the backup material, so.
Yes. So I would like to make a motion to approve- So I would like to make a motion to approve Item 35 and 36 with the amendments done in the development agreement.
All right. Motion by Councilmember Parsley, seconded by Councilmember Heiser. Is there discussion on the motion? All right. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
All right. Motion carries six to one. And this is first reading of the zoning. And so we just passed the development agreement. And so here we are in the same situation. So what do we need to do about the development agreement that's being passed now when the zoning will come back for second reading at the next meeting?
Yep.
Sines, City Attorney, for the record, the development agreement needs to have the effective date be the date that the zoning is finally adopted.
All right. I'm going to do a couple of motions and reconsiderations here because we've got, we can't keep doing this. We've got to make sure that we're passing these things at the right time. So I'd like to actually make a motion to reconsider Agenda Item 35.
Second.
All right. Motion by Mayor, seconded by Councilmember Zuniga. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
All right. Motion carries six to one. I'd like to make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number 35, subject to final passage of the zoning for, that is associated with this item.
Second.
All right. Motion by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Tobias, or Mayor Pro Tim Tobias. Is there discussion on that motion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
All right. Motion carries six to one. All right. Next up is Agenda Item Number 37, reconsider, reconsideration of a vote on Woodmere Park Architectural Development Agreement. So the reason for the reconsideration on this is the same issue that we just dealt with, with regards to Mr. Brooks, his project. I want to make sure that we are not passing development agreements on first reading and then having there be a potential for liability on second reading of the zoning where a development agreement is passed. It was never, it was always intended to be concurrent with the zoning, but if the zoning failed and the development agreement was passed on first reading, there could be liability. So what I wanted to do is actually just reconsider the development agreement, which would bring it back to the table for us to have a discussion as we're voting on it with, on second reading of the zoning for Woodmere. So I'd like to make a motion to reconsider the vote on the Woodmere Park Architectural Development Agreement.
I'd like to call a point of order, please.
Councilmember, well, there's a motion on the floor. So we're going to let the motion fail or is there a second?
Second.
All right. The motion by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Parsley. Councilor Floris Cale.
Yeah, my point of order is just what I discussed previously. On 11723, the motion was for the DA and the zoning. And so therefore, both of it, the DA was already approved. And according to the rules of council, you cannot reconsider. And then that's what's written on the agenda. And I know, I think it was brought up that the rules, Robert's rules allows you to resend, but the resend is not what's on the agenda. It's the reconsideration. And so therefore, that would fall back to the rules of council, creating a point of order.
Okay. So that, it's overruled. I believe we can reconsider items at the next meeting, but we literally just reconsidered a development agreement and voted on it.
Yeah, I didn't.
You didn't. So just to be clear. So I'm overruling. If you want to appeal to the council, we can take
I would like to appeal, and according to the information that I also provided in my email.
Okay. So the point of order is being appealed. So we'll take a roll call vote. Yes, vote means that we cannot reconsider the development agreement. No vote means that we can.
Tobias. Floris Cale.
Yes means that we don't reconsider. Is that correct?
Yes sustains your point of order and we cannot reconsider.
Bradshaw.
Yes.
Parsley?
Nay.
Mitchell?
Nay.
Zuniga?
Yes.
Heiser?
Nay.
All right. Motion fails four to three. So now there's a motion on the table to reconsider the item. So we'll take a roll call vote on that. So now a yes vote allows for us to reconsider and a no vote does not.
Very confusing.
Yeah. Now we're taking the opposite vote, but a yes vote allows for us to reconsider.
Mayor, I think the motion needs to be a motion to rescind the vote.
Rescind, not reconsider.
Even if that's not what's posted on the agenda?
It's sufficient notice to the public that the matter's going to be reconsidered. The specific procedural motion would be to motion rescind the vote, the primary.
So what is the difference between Item 37 and Item 34?
The difference is that under the rules of council, for a matter that was approved with at least four votes of council, the motion to reconsider can only be made by a member who voted with the prevailing side and at the same meeting, the vote to be reconsidered was taken. So the reconsideration would have to have been taken up at the meeting at which the vote was taken under that circumstance.
That is exactly the situation with Item 34?
No, it's different because one failed and one passed. So because it failed, Mr. Brooks' failed, then it's different than if it passes. If it passes and there's more than four, then you can only reconsider at that meeting.
Under the rules of council, the way it's drafted, if there's a, if the vote fails, then it can be brought back at a subsequent meeting, at the next meeting with a motion for reconsideration. But if the matter passed, it has to be taken up at the same meeting.
I've never heard that distinction in seven years.
It's actually in the rules of council.
I wrote those rules.
Exactly.
We've just never had this situation.
So it's, that's not the intention of the rules. So
Yeah. And you've got the item on the agenda later to talk about the rules, but Robert's rules.
The intention of the rules of council, which we just discussed, and it's posted for reconsideration, it's semantics if you're talking about rescinding versus reconsidering as far as I can tell. But the rules of council allow for the prevailing side to bring back an item at the next meeting. I understand there's a during the meeting element as well, but we are doing the same thing with Item 34. Councilmember Floris Cale used it to bring back Woodmere the first time with the reconsideration process. So the difference between a pass and a fail, as far as I, that's just not something that I've been privy to. So that clearly the rules of council don't spell it out that clearly or don't articulate that difference. But if you're, if that's what you're saying, we need to use the word rescind, then because it was approved versus not, that's fine.
Correct.
But if you're, so, but it's posted as a reconsideration.
That's, that's, that's fine. It's a method of reconsideration. It's just that your, Robert's rules requires it be a rescission.
All right. So I would like to withdraw my motion and make a new motion to rescind. I still don't understand why this is the right way, but to rescind the Woodmere Park Architectural Development Agreement.
Second.
All right. Motion by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Parsley. Roll call vote.
I'm sorry.
It's still, we're still on the, we're trying to get to the point where we can take the item up again. That's all this is.
So a yes is we can take it up again?
Yes. A yes is we can take it up again, which is the opposite of what it was before because of the point of order.
Parsley?
Nay.
Zuniga?
Yes.
Tobias? I'm sorry, what was that?
Nay.
Heiser?
Nay.
Bradshaw?
I have a question. Okay. So if we vote no, then it stands as it was approved? And if we vote yes, then we open the discussion for reconsideration? Is that correct?
Correct. A yes vote is to open it for reconsideration.
Okay. Nay.
And
I, it's a misunderstanding there.
Yes. No, yes. It's just completely. So we're in the middle of a roll call vote.
We were on the right track the first time.
Yes.
I think when you, when you had it going.
I don't even know where the votes are at this point on the item. So we're in the middle of a roll call vote. So for clarification, we'll redo the roll call vote. We initially had a point of order to determine whether we could bring this item. That point of order was overruled, so that we can. Now we're taking the vote to bring, to have, to bring back the development agreement so that it can be voted on concurrently. It's simply the item for reconsideration is to avoid the legal issue that we, of passing a development agreement on first reading without having the zoning finally passed, which creates a situation where we grant an entitlement before we grant the zoning. That's what the, that's what this is about. It's not about the item. That comes next after this.
But if we vote for the zoning and it's passed, then there's no effect.
If you, if we pass the zoning, then the development agreement is already in effect because we voted on it at the last meeting.
Right. That's my whole point. Unless somebody changes their vote, then it, then it doesn't do anything.
You are correct.
So if we just say no, we want to leave it the way it is, and then we take a vote and it passes, there is, there's no legal issue.
We will have closed the loophole, but I'm trying to, I'm trying to open it up and procedurally do it the right way.
So the loophole.
You are correct.
Right. The loophole only exists if it fails.
Correct.
Okay.
Which is not a determined outcome.
It's not.
So I wanted to have them be voted on at the same time so that those outcomes can happen at the same time. That's what the reconsideration is for. I'm just trying to protect the city on this. So a yes vote will allow for us to reconsider the item. A no vote will put that in place and we'll move to the second reading of the zoning. So roll call vote.
Parsley?
A yes vote is to reconsider. Okay. Yes.
Zuniga?
Yes.
Tobias?
Nay.
Heiser?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Nay.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Floris Cale?
No.
All right. I think that passed four to three. All right. Motion to reconsider or rescind passed four to three. And now we'll bring up the items together. First item is Agenda Item Number 38, which is the Woodmere Park Architectural Development Agreement. And then the next item is Agenda Item 35, second reading and ordinance amending Chapter 53 of the City of Kyle, Texas, for the purpose of rezoning approximately 54.2 acres of land from RS to R1T, R1T, R12, TU, and to PUD, RS 17.7 acres, R1T 14.56 acres, R12 22.49 acres, for property located at 1500 East RR 150 in Hayes County, Texas. This item obviously has been back and forth, but by doing this, we now can bring up second reading. We can also bring up the development agreement. Ms. Sines, I think you believe that, you said that there have been some changes that are being proposed from the development agreement that we voted on the first time, but now it's back before us again. So is there anything that you wanted to add before we just move on to the vote? Because we've discussed this thing for a year.
Just to make council aware that, when council approved the development agreement at the last meeting, it was approved with the appropriate phasing of the construction of the commercial, having to begin before the COs for the residential could be issued for the properties along 150. And what was added to the development agreement were some restrictions on land uses that were proposed by the developer team. And so that's outside of what council approved in the motion, in the specific motion. I did go back and listen to it. The land uses were not approved in the, to be included in the contract. They were discussed, but they were not included in that vote. So with an approval tonight, you can incorporate those changes.
Okay. And those changes are in the backup material?
They are in the backup material.
So if we, so if we vote on it now, if we motion to approve, it will be the amended that includes those restrictions?
Correct.
Councilmember Floris Cale.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number 38 and 39.
Second, motion by Councilmember Floris Cale, seconded by the mayor that we approved Agenda Items 38 and 39. Is there discussion on the motion? Only discussion point I have is clarification on the retail. At the last meeting, there was a conversation about committing the retail to be constructed concurrently with the residential. That was agreed to verbally. I want to make sure that it's codified in the development agreement.
Along with the limited retail.
Well, she just testified that that part was.
I saw it.
But I just wanted to codify. And we have, we have language that we approved with Joe Brooks relating to COs being issued and the timing of those COs. And so if you don't, if it's not in, there's the template for how to affect that. While they're waiting, Councilmember Zuniga.
Call the question.
Can I get the answer to this first? I just want to make sure. But you're right. And then we'll, and then we'll call the question.
We've heard it for a year.
So there's no discussion?
I'm just, we're just waiting for the answer to confirm that the retail must be.
I know. But there is no discussion because somebody called the question before we can even open the mouth. Interesting.
We do not have that language in there, so that would need to be added.
Okay. So can we get the language from the Brooks Development Agreement? All right. Councilmember Heiser.
So what happens now if we vote on this and that's not cemented in the agreement?
We need it cemented in the agreement.
So then can I call a motion to postpone this until it's in writing from the developer?
There's a motion on the table already. So a motion to postpone is not an amendment. So I don't know that you can make a motion to postpone while there's a motion on the table. It's a, it's a simple line to add into the agreement. Councilmember Floris Cale.
Thank you. I just want to say that this is, would not be the first time that we have made a motion and we have moved forward with the understanding that that was going to be added and that it would be sent to us. So if we do want to wait till the end, I'm okay with that too.
We can, we can do it in general language and allow them to write the specifics because we do understand the language, which is in the Brooks DA. I want to, I'm surprised it wasn't, I'm surprised it wasn't added, frankly, because, because that was something that we very clearly stated in the last meeting. So.
The language currently says that the construction on the RS portion of the property has to commence, there's not a concurrent commencement provision. It's that
What does it say?
The certificate of occupancy for the first residence will not be issued by the city until construction has commenced on the RS portion of the property adjacent to the east FM 150 portion of the property.
That's exactly what I was hoping was in there. So that is in the agreement currently?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Well, then that's what I was, that's what I was asking for.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Is there discussion on, further discussion on the motion? All right. We'll roll call vote.
I'd like to say something.
All right. Councilmember Heiser.
Yeah. You know, Councilmember Zuniga, you reached out to me a few days ago to discuss this agenda item and shared concerns of increased congestion on 150 due to construction in an area that you know is already being overrun by congestion. So you and I discussed, and what I told you in that conversation is that let's set up a time to meet with the county, which I could set up very quickly for us to at least initiate a first conversation to figure out what we can do working together to try to support this development. And you said you would be willing to do that. So I'm asking you if you would be willing to postpone this vote until we can have those conversations. Because we are in agreement, and I think there are multiple people up here on this dais who would agree that the pains of growth people are experiencing are becoming rather exhausting. And we've heard a lot of them from citizen comments tonight relating to other matters. But if there's something that we can do up here to make this easier, I would ask that you consider that. And if you don't, that's fine.
No, I'm always open to working with anybody from the county, but not developing because of the roads. I don't think that, there's a, there's a state law that does, that developers can still develop. And in this development, it adds to the vibe. It's a good standard development and brings in some retail. And they already have by right the ability to build.
I'm not saying it goes
All right. Hang on, hang on, hang on. You proposed a question. Councilmember Floris Cale.
Can we, I think he called the question.
You can call it again, but it was, it was early. So if you want to do it now.
Okay. No, no, I totally understand. I'm just, the truth of the matter is this conversation is not worth 24 houses. And that is the difference between what is being proposed and what is, what is already allowed. being proposed and what is, what is already allowed. So again, to avoid any misinformation, there are a difference of 24 homes and no retail between the first one and the second one. So with that said, I would like to call the question.
All right, that's a non-debatable motion, does not require second. Uh, it's an immediate roll call vote. So a yes vote ends debate, uh, and then immediately proceeds to calling for, uh, a vote. So roll call vote.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Zuniga.
Yes.
Heizer.
No.
Tobias.
Yes.
Parsley.
Nay.
Bradshaw.
Yes.
All right, so the question is called. We proceed, uh, to a roll call vote on the motion.
Yes.
Tobias.
Aye.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Floris Cale.
Yes.
Zuniga.
Yes.
Heizer.
No.
Parsley.
Nay.
All right, motion carries five to two.
I do have a question.
I have a question too. May I ask, um, Councilmember Zuniga, how many people you talk about this item with?
We cannot continue with the, the debate on the item after the vote has been called.
Well, I just want to know how many people he talked about because if he called one, two, three, four, did he break quorum talking about this item?
All right, we're going to take a 10 minute, no, we're going to take, the item is not on, uh, on the table. We're going to take a 10-minute break, give ourselves a chance to calm down. We will reconvene at 10:10. Thank you. Seven of Texas tax code. Uh, this is, item is just a public hearing procedurally. So if there are no objections, I'm going to open the public hearing. Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone who wishes to come forward and speak? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Public hearing is now closed. Next up is agenda item 27, proposed budget for the Arts and Cultural Commission event. Uh, Ms. Colleen Tierney.
Can I stop you? The public hearing was to stay open until next meeting.
Okay. Uh, if there are no objections, I'm going to reopen the public hearing. Seeing none, uh, public hearing is now open, and now we're going to move on. Agenda item number 27, proposed budget for the Arts and Cultural Commission events.
Mayor and City Council, Colleen Tierney, Director of Library Services for the record. Um, I have the proposed budget, um, that the Arts and Cultural Commission has been working on. And, um, Chairperson, Chairwoman Vanessa Westbrook will come present it to the council.
I'd start off by saying good evening, but maybe I should say good night, not meaning we're leaving. So what you have before you is the budget for the Arts and Cultural Commission. I believe everybody has a copy in front of them. If not, I have extras here. Okay. Um, so we were told that basically we had $65,000 in which we would be able to utilize for programs, events, et cetera, during the course of this fiscal year for the Arts and Cultural Commission. So what you have before you is a kind of a list of activities that we want to focus on and be able to use, um, this money. And we've kind of piecemealed it out in regards to specific events. Now, let me do say that when you're looking at the art reception, the Summer Art Festival, the cultural events slash activities, the Kyle Railroad Museum Artist Event, the Community Theater Project, and the City Sculptures, these different types of activities and events that we came up with was based on lots of discussion and a look at the general description of what we were given, uh, for this commission when it was up and started. So one of the things that we looked at in the, this general description was roles and responsibilities. And pretty much every time we have a discussion about some kind of event that we're planning on doing, we're looking at what you gave us as a guidance for, uh, a specific event, et cetera. And so what we did is we looked at how these, there's eight bullets that are listed, uh, saying are directing us into a specific direction, uh, for either a program or an event, et cetera. And that's how we came up with these particular activities that we want to try to, uh, do here in the City of Kyle. There's two of them that are coming up relatively quickly that we want to get started. When I say quickly, I mean at least 60 days from now, um, is the art reception as well as the Summer Arts Festival. Um, you have before you how we kind of piecemealed it out, how much money we want to spend. We don't have very specific, uh, details right now, but we have general ballparks. For instance, the Summer Art Festival, we had conversations with the PAC and looking at how they could assist us in doing a Summer's Arts Festival as well as provide us with a venue to be able to do the event, which we're anticipating we want to try to do in September. However, to put a deposit down on the PAC, which is a hugely discounted amount, um, we would need to get back with them in the next 15 to 20 days. Everything else we would be looking at in regards to materials and supplies, rental equipment, et cetera, et cetera. The art reception, uh, is something that we would like to have as quickly as we possibly can for reasons that, um, we would like to have the community know that we're up, we're out, we're doing things. We want to establish a, a atmosphere of promoting the arts. And we believe that this art reception will be able to do just that, to help us establish a database of various types of artists under different genres to be able to come together for a few hours. We wanted to partner up with the Railroad Depot across the street, as a matter of fact, which is a free venue we would be able to use in order to have this reception, have the community come out. More importantly, have the artistic community to be able to come out, to put themselves on our database so that we can have these categories of friends as well as artists in the City of Kyle and the surrounding area. So we were basically told, you guys get up to $65,000. And we said, here's how we'd like to spend that money for this year, which is what we have in front of you today with two of the events coming up in the next few months. Questions?
All right, thank you, Ms. Westbrook. Does anybody have any questions, uh, from Ms. Westbrook or comments? Councilor Floris Cale.
Um, I don't know how the rest of council feels, but I would really like to see a statue somewhere. When we talk about the arts, I would like to be able to invest in something that is, uh, permanent. And so we can start, you know, maybe even in the downtown or by the railroad, just something that people can come and take a picture with, or, um, something that eventually catches on, like, you know, I know, I think, um, Austin has the guitars or something. But, you know, something small and simple, because, you know, they are very expensive. Um, but I would like to see something somewhere in the city that resembles a statue. I'm not sure how the rest of council feels, but that's, that's how I feel. But, and, and thank you guys again for your volunteering.
Right. So on the right side of the budget, down at the bottom, it says City Sculptures. That's kind of where it falls in the, in that area. So yeah, that's on our list of things to do.
Okay, I don't, yeah.
What, we don't know, but, uh, yeah, we had a deep discussion about that. Plus the fact of the, lots of citizens who have contacted us from various saying, we need, we need sculpture. Okay, we got you. So that's where that is. Um, we have a category for that on the budget.
Mayor Protem.
Yes, uh, thank you for bringing this forward and, and automizing each one of these activities by dollar by dollar or just your ballpark. So that way it gives a breakdown of how you're going to be able to utilize this money, uh, which is even great, talking about how we're saying about the PAC Center. I remember we had mentioned about, you know, having a summer festival. Maybe one day we could be like a town, like a festival at the lake one day, maybe next year or in years to come. Uh, and, but also utilizing the PAC Center, because hopefully by then, if it stops raining, maybe Laverde will be up and running, right? So we can even use some of that park space, you know, because we're, you know, we're shooting for June, uh, on that end. So we might be on track for your budget here for the timeline. So, uh, but I think it's great that you broke it down and you could be able to, uh, utilize it and so forth. But yes, Ms. Floris Cale makes a great point about maybe getting some ideas for sculptures around the city. And also in years to come, maybe another idea was to have the arts festival throughout the city. One day at Laverde, even downtown, and at the lake, all at the same time. So people can hit the city, uh, in, in one weekend in different areas. Just an idea there.
Uh, Councilman Floris Cale actually attended our last meeting, and she was in part listening to our discussion about the community theater. And our first question was, so when's Laverde Amphitheater going to be ready? That'll be a cool spot.
One day.
Um, we'll keep that in mind. Yes, other questions, please?
Other, other questions or comments? I ha- I have one. I don't know if, Rachel, did you see that text I just sent you? Uh, I'm trying to get it, something put up on the screen. I don't have it. So, uh, and this is sort of for council, it's also for you. So, um, it's related to the sculpture piece, but as you know, we're in the process of acquiring, or you may not know this, but council knows, we're in the process of acquiring Papa Jack's, the last building over here. And in the center wall, there's a devising wall between the old Jack Saxes and current Papa Jack's. And that devising wall is, uh, original. And so within the, that, that wall, there are a lot of stones that I've been told, uh, because we've had other buildings burned down through the years, that the, the mortar is pretty easily, uh, removed. And so that's a huge piece of, so there's history, there's art. And then that building in particular was part of the old Tenorio Grocery with Blas and Sam Tenorio were the ones who founded that and operated that for a long time. So here we have a situation where a building is coming down, but that center wall, uh, is, uh, it has got some really great historic stone. It's been in the City of Kyle for a century, uh, or however long that is now. Um, would the Arts and Cultural Commission be interested in, in, in helping? Because we can't do all of it on, this on our own, but would you all be interested in helping us come up with a plan to, and even if we added resources to your budget, to, uh, to safely remove these bricks, clean them, or these stones, and then maybe, they're probably trying to get that picture up. Sorry, Rachel. Uh, and then maybe come up with a way to repurpose them as an homage to Blas and Sam Tenorio.
Absolutely.
Because we've had, we've had, I think, we, Blas Tenorio Day a couple times in the seventies, it was once, and then we did it again in 2015. So he seems like a very prime candidate to be honored in that way. And here we have this stonework. So I was just thinking, maybe we could put all that together and make a project. I don't know where, I don't know what the scope of that is, but that's the framework for a project that is in my head.
Yep, no, I, I'm completely with you there. As a matter of fact, um-
There it is.
Yeah, okay.
You can see it where the, where the fire took out the top.
Right.
But I believe that it could be cleaned up, and maybe we could reuse some of the stone.
Yeah, in regards to having perhaps some artists, um, commission it or something like that. Absolutely. Yes, we're definitely open to that. As a matter of fact, um, some of the events that we're doing, and they're small, have been suggestions from you all, as well as citizens, saying, can you guys do a such and such? And we're going to say, yes, we can. As a matter of fact, we did MLK in three weeks.
Right.
And it was fabulous.
Yeah.
I think I'm biased. But, um, at any rate, yes, we can definitely, and that's what we're here for, to see how we can take what we have, you know, of course, I love the historical perspective of anything, serving on historical commission for so long, and turn it into art. Uh, we have lots of ideas. So here's our ballpark for just this first year of things we want to do. But there's lots of small things that are going to come up, not on here, that really won't cost us money, just a little bit of time. Just today, someone said, what are we doing for Cinco de Mayo? I'll let you know. So, yes, by all means.
Well, I know that you're, um, you're obviously wanting us to approve your scope for it now, which I'm happy to do. I'm sure we all are. But we are going to be closing on that building soon. And as a result, we'll, we're, we're going to be moving in to try to take it down to make that area not a construction site anymore. But is that something you think you all could take up? Is, is something like this to help, give us some advice on what to do with that?
I certainly do believe that we can. And, um, I can certainly put on our agenda file next meeting, which is next week, so we can have the initial discussion about, here we have some materials that, as you were talking to me, my first thought is we could commission someone to do something with the material. That's, that's my thought, easiest way to go, and then we oversee that. So yes, I think-
And if you could help us find someone who can give us advice on how best to get, to get that down, so that we don't break yet, because I don't know that public works is going to be, you know?
Absolutely, yes. We'll put that on our agenda file next week.
Does anybody have any objections to what I'm proposing here?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, that's a, it's a great idea to, to pay homage to a great family that, that was here, uh, especially the, the Tenorio family. Uh, I think it's a great idea that we, we try to utilize some of the, the old building that was there. And then also maybe, I don't know, mural, whatever it is, but what, you know, you, or if there's additional part that we use, we can use some of the brick. But I think you, uh, that your commission could be able to come up with some great ideas-
Yes.
-on that end, and just to pay homage to that family.
Absolutely.
All right, does anybody want to make a motion on the budget?
I'd like to make a motion to go ahead and approve agenda item number 27 as written.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Protem, seconded by Councilor Floris Cale, that we approve agenda item 27. Is there discussion on that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right, motion carries seven to zero. Colleen.
So, um, I just, Mayor and City Council, I just need a little bit of clarification about, um, directing us how to, um, what to use to spend the funds, because that's a question that the, the commission has been asking me as the staff liaison of like to, to, um, expend the money that's budgeted. Um, I wasn't sure what the direction was, whether there's, um, I have a, you know, a city credit card through the library, but I didn't know what they, I don't have an answer when they ask me how to, um, go about making these purchases.
Prevez, do you think you could get with them to help them sort that out?
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Okay, yeah.
All right, next up is agenda item number 28, uh, consideration of amendments to seize alcohol sale permit and license applications and annual fees pursuant to maximum permitted fees as established by the TABC, uh, September 1st, 2021 rates. Ms. Seines.
Mayor and Council, we're here back before you with information that you requested regarding the estimated fees that would be charged if you enacted and implemented these permit fees. And I would defer to Finance Director to provide additional information about the, what those estimates are.
Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members, for, for the record, I'm Prevez, Mohe City's Director of Finance. In your agenda package, uh, attached to this item is a analysis that the Finance Department completed at your request. We downloaded from TABC's, uh, database all the businesses located and licensed within the city limits of Kyle in Hayes County that have liquor license, beer license, and what have you, the various types of permits. TABC only allows cities to charge a maximum of 50% of what TABC charges the businesses. So in this analysis, you will see the names, addresses, and the types of license each business has from TABC and what they have paid to TABC. Our best estimate at this point, based on that data, uh, we don't, we did not audit this information, so I cannot give you that assurance that this database that we downloaded was 100% accurate. But based on that information from TABC, it is our estimate that if City Council was to reinstate this permit fee, alcohol sales permit fee back in Kyle, it would raise anywhere between 25 and $30,000 per year. Now, you got to remember, these licenses are a two-year license fee issued by TABC. So there'll be a rotation amongst these different businesses. So that's why I'm saying our estimate is, is a range between 25 and $30,000 at best.
Okay. Uh, any questions, comments, motions? Councilor Floris Cale.
Thank you, thank you. Um, man, that, my only holdup is, is this worth enough stress to an act, like, I guess, would Jennifer be in charge of this? I don't know how this is going to go down. For 20, 20, don't get me wrong, 25, 30,000, that's a lot. Like, I get it.
The look she is giving me right now, I don't think she wants to be in charge.
So if we have to hire, my thing is if we have to hire another employee, if we have to do additional stuff, is it going to, is that 20, 30,000 going to be expended in a different way where we ju-
If we take on this responsibility, the enforcement part comes with it, and monitoring responsibilities come with it. We do not have a staff person either in the City Secretary's Office, Police Department, or Finance Department. You, we would have to invest in hiring a full-time or requesting council to fund a full-time position. full-time position. The amount of revenues that we will generate from reinstating this permit fee would not be adequate or sufficient to pay for a full-time employee in any city department.
Okay, that was my worry. What number is this? This is, I would like to make a motion to deny?
Second.
All right, motion by Councilmember Flores-Cale, seconded by Councilmember Parsley. Is there discussion on that motion? Yeah, I got, I got a couple of things to say. I'm gonna lose this, but I'm gonna tell you all exactly what I think about this. So number one, there, right now, there's what, 96 checks to collect throughout the course of an entire year? And that, that checks, those amounts could equal, or close to equal, an FTE that we could get paid for by Twin Liquors and all of these, Target and various other places, Room 111 and Poco Loco. And it would create, probably two-thirds of that staff member's time would be freed up that we could then use for other things. That's one. Number two is, of all the things for us to subsidize, alcohol sales makes no sense to me as the thing that we would be wanting to subsidize on alcohol sales. So that's just not something that we struggle with. We made the pool free, that's a $50,000 whack, and now we're making alcohol sales free. The better way to do it is to marry those. It's like, no, we make the pool free, but in exchange, here's a revenue source that can compensate for something like that. Money does not grow on trees. Making the pool free does come at a cost. We have to provide city services. We also have first-year-on-us incentive programs, restaurant incentive programs. Those are targeted incentives designed to bring about economic development and prosperity within our community. It has been said that if we do this, we will hamper our restaurant community. Well, the other cities in Hayes County charge this fee, and every one of them has a better restaurant community from a standpoint of economic development and tax revenue generation than the city of Kyle. So, and we haven't even been charging this, so you cannot make the argument that not charging this is sufficient. So for all of those reasons, and it's been on the books, we should have been collecting it all of this time, and we didn't, I definitely support putting this on. Those are my opinions, though. Councilmember Heiser?
Yeah, I mean, as currently constructed, I would be a no vote. I'd need to know more. Looking at the backup material, when it talks about the estimated city fees and you have, you have restaurants of the same size, one paying $20, one paying $1,650, I don't understand how that math checks out or why it is the way that it is. So I still have questions, and it seems like we don't, the answers might not be available, because I've asked staff these questions. And because of this database, it doesn't seem like we have the ability to figure it out. So I, you know, I would be willing to hedge on this and say that we, we don't institute it for a year or something along those lines, because people need to know that it's coming. Because I agree with you. I mean, I sat up here and I asked to make the pool free, and to sit and, you know, walk away from alcohol sales, which I do agree is something that should be taxed, but the way that, you know, just with the information we have, like, I don't know how to make sense of any of this, when there's just a lack of consistency with these estimated city fees, when I have, we have no idea how much we'd actually bring in per, per current establishment. And then, what do we have, 28 new restaurants opening up? I don't know how many of which have alcohol sales, but, I mean, how are we gonna figure out what to charge them?
Councilmember Parsley?
I called the question.
All right, the question's been called. It's a non-debatable motion. Roll call, vote? Yes, vote, ends debate. No vote continues. It's non-debatable. The question's called.
Parsley? Yes. Heiser? Bradshaw is absent. Mitchell?
Yes.
Flores-Cale?
Yes.
Zuniga?
Yes.
Tobias?
Hi.
All right, question's been called. We'll do a roll call vote on the moment, motion to deny.
Zuniga?
To deny, yes.
Flores-Cale?
Yes.
Heiser?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
I don't know what I'm voting for, so.
You just?
Tax. Okay. Aye.
Tobias?
Nay.
Mitchell?
Nay. All right, motion carries five to two. All right, next up is Agenda Item Number 29, approve a master agreement with KCI Technologies Incorporated, Sparks, Maryland, a civil engineering consulting firm in an amount not to exceed $204,580 to provide a comprehensive street pavement evaluation infrastructure assessment. Mr. Barbara?
Can I, can I request for this to be brought up with Item 41, please?
Is there any objection to bringing up Item 41 at this time as well? All right, Agenda Item 41, discussion about current and future road project not included in the road bond and possible action to establish a dedicated page for these projects showing a timeline of scheduled activities for these repairs. So we can have this discussion with Mr. Barba. Do you want him to go first, though?
If I may go first, because that, what he's proposing may be some of, a part of the discussion of what I was trying to bring up.
Okay.
So I had residents kind of do a poll about the roads that are not inside the road bond that are in need of attention. And we came up with about 17. Some of those are part of the county, some of the city, some sections were part of the road bond. So I met with staff members just to kind of get an understanding of what we are doing currently to fix the roads that are within our jurisdiction to get fixed, what the process looks like, timeline, stuff like that, just for us to be able to talk to residents about, you know, their concerns about roads. What I've learned is that a lot of the repairs we're doing ourselves, and Mr. Harper mentioning, he was mentioning how the process works, some of the roads that are in really, really big need of attention, he kind of gave me an idea that we may have to redo the, do the whole construction. So part of the agenda was, first of all, to talk about the current roads that we are fixing. There are roads that are, like, they hide in, hidden, hide in, right, that one, that I know that you mentioned that that's gonna be a bigger project, and we may or may not be able to, to pay for it, or if we wanted to go ahead and do a contract to get it fixed. There was the sledge, which I loved it, because I can cross that out of the map, because it's already been fixed. So what I would like to hear from you is, what options do we have to get kind of like, I didn't say dedicated page, it could be even a tab on the city of Kyle page, where it will be easier for residents to kind of take a look of what roads we are fixing, if they're, if they're in queue to get fixed after whatever project we have. And I understand there are staff members get pulled to do different projects, so we may not have a detailed, exact timeline of when things will get fixed, but I do wanna have better communications with the residents on when the roads will be, when we're planning to fix them. Another thing that Harper mentioned is to wait for Item 29, because that may give us a better scope of work on the roads that we want to fix. So I'm open to, to having the discussion, what your suggestions are.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Leon Barba, City Engineer. Let me try to give you as brief as I can what this pavement assessment does for the city and what it does for us as engineers and for Public Works. What this firm is going to do is get their equipment out there. It's got lasers, cameras, all kinds of devices to help measure on, on the condition of a road. There's two things that we're gonna get from this study. One is gonna be the, what we call the PCI, Pavement Condition Index. That looks at your potholes, that looks at your street failures, looks at the rutting, looks at those various things, that deformed, that the roads are deformed and why it's, why it's in bad shape. The most you can get on, the best scores range from 0 to 100. Anything above 80 is excellent. Anything from 60 to 80 is fair, 40 to 60 is, is, is poor. Anything below 40, it's bad. It needs to be reconstructed more than likely. You're not gonna get much, you're not gonna do any good with putting a seal coat or any kind of thin overlay on it, it's not gonna work. So that's what this report gives us. It's all, it also tells us another number. It gives us the IRI, the International Roughness Index. There's two types of conditions you're gonna run on the east side. One is where the road is up and down, and it measures inches per mile. Anything greater than 200 is really rough. It's really up and down. So those are the two measurements that we'll get from the study. And as a sidebar, we are gonna pick up signs and sidewalks and some, I think some signals and some signs, sidewalk, and the streetlights. We're gonna pick that up as part of this survey also. That's an addition that we asked for. If you remember at the budget session, I asked for about $250,000 because I wanted to include some other things in our study. So that's the good thing about this study, picks up some additional information for us so we can have an inventory. But back, back to my explanation, we use those studies to look at the roads that we want to resurface. Remember, we get $500,000 a year for micro-surfacing. It's a thin layer of slurry material that we put on the roads. That's only good for a road that's in fairly decent condition. We may have to do a few spot repairs, may have to do a little bit of crack sealing, but it's good material that lasts for about five, six, seven years, depending on, on the traffic loads that we get on it. The other thing we look at is, how much traffic do we have on there? Do we want to spend money on rebuilding a road that's got 10, 15, 20 average daily vehicles? No, that's a lot of money to spend for a road that doesn't have a lot of traffic. So we're gonna look at how much traffic each road has in addition to those scores. And so what we do is, every year, even though we have this survey, we look at each individual road, we spread the work around. In my previous city, that was one thing that we always did, spread the money around through the city, so you don't just focus on one area. We could do that in one area, but we really want to spread the money around throughout the city. So we try to balance what we spend on north, south, east, and west. So that's how we set up our resurfacing processes. But what you start getting into, if you start letting that road get down below, say, a 60 or in that 40 to 60 range, now you're looking at major overlays, where you have to go mill it with a milling machine, you have to put that much material back on top of it, and that gets expensive. You're starting to get expensive now. And the worst situation that you want to run into is letting that road go down too far. One of the things that we've heard before is, keep good roads in good shape by resurfacing and doing some, it's just the same thing as changing oil in your vehicle. You don't have to change the oil in your vehicle if you don't want to. But it's very cheap maintenance, and you need to do it on a routine basis. That's the same with the road. If we don't maintain it and keep it in decent shape with this minor resurfacing, eventually we're gonna lose that road. And one good example of that is Kohler's Crossing right now. We've got a major plan for that one, to rehab that road. We're looking at three-faced operation on that, and it's not gonna be very cheap for that, for that particular road, because it got away from us. We should have done some resurfacing or some kind of seal coat several years ago, but it didn't happen. So that's the reason we'd like this pavement assessment. It tells us, it also tells you, the last time we did this survey was back in 2016, so it's already been six years now that we've delayed this pavement assessment. So it's gonna tell us, are we spending enough money every year to maintain these roads in good condition? We want to maintain our roads in at least 60, 70, 80 category. That's what we want to keep our roads on the average. And if we don't do that, they start, there's a graph that you can see where it starts going down, the maintenance costs, and the maintenance costs start going up. So that's the purpose of the pavement assessment. We use that tool to look at the roads that we want to resurface, we look at how much money we have, and if, if we're not spending enough money, we're gonna see that happening because the numbers are gonna start going down on our road repairs.
Councilmember Zuniga?
Yeah, I agree with the Councilmember Parsley. I think that was, seeing a webpage would be very helpful for, for the residents to see the roads, how we're moving on in terms of fixing them later. But I have another question for you, Leon. The $270,000 for the KCI contract, I remember back in December, we used KCI. Was this like a preliminary feasibility? You were, it was the same thing, weren't they gonna do analysis of some of the roads back in December, when I, when I got on council?
We did have a firm that was gonna look at Kohler's Crossing.
Were they doing the same thing that we're doing now? I thought it was KCI.
I wanted that part, that specific road targeted, because I could see some issues.
It was $30,000.
That's correct, that's right, that's what we was paying for, yes.
So we did the same thing back in December?
No, we didn't do as much in Del. With this particular study, we don't do that kind of detailed evaluation. When we did Kohler's, we had two different types of devices. I won't try to get, give you all the technical terms, but we had some special devices that were used to look at the road and analyze the road. I think we had ground penetrating radar and the wet ball, or the ball drop, I forget what they call it. But anyway, we, we did special tests on that road, so this study's not gonna do that. It's just gonna use the cameras and the lasers to measure.
So, so how often do we have to redo this study? Like, how good is this data after a year, after two years? Because I was thinking, would it be better to buy or to hire another civil engineer for the city, like, with this amount of money that would help us out? Like, with roads, as since we're, have many coming on, on the bonds and so many old bonds? Because a lot of this is very subjective, right? If you, if you score a road by cracks, by depressions, do we get good, good data that we can use that really helps us maintain these roads so that we don't lose money? I mean, because I'm thinking, is, is $207,000 better use in another civil engineer for the city? I mean, I don't know how many engineers you have.
This is a civil engineering firm.
Right, but for our own civil engineer? Like, thinking more long-term, having another person?
What this does in a few months is they evaluate all of our roads. If you tried to hire somebody to just do that, that would, that would take them the whole year just to kind of do that kind of thing.
Okay.
And again, they don't have that detailed information, because what they do is they use what's, the Army Corps of Engineers developed this system. They developed it, and they measure all the cracks, all, all the potholes, everything. That's how it's measured, and they come up with that number, they've come up with that number. So it's been a process, been used for many, many years by, by many cities.
So the last thing I'll ask you, can, can we do something about depressions in the road? Because I have a resident that's sending me photos of, in front of their driveway, there is a depression, and I've walked over and looked at it, and it just, there's not really good drainage there, but it seems like it's just pushed, depressed. So how do we fix that? It's not a pothole, but so do we just fill it back in and seal it? I mean, is this something our public's work can handle? Maybe a, a small piece that's depressed, so it doesn't look like a hole?
There's a couple of ways you can do that. You can either excavate and try to find out what's causing it, that's one way, or it's a temporary, you just do what we call, I call a level up. You just level up, and that's, that's all you do.
That's all they need, yeah.
Now, it's not very pretty when you get through, but it's, it does level it up.
Right, they just wanted something to work. So we can handle a level up?
Yeah, that, that should be fairly routine with the pothole patching truck that we have.
Okay, thank you, Leon.
Okay, my thoughts, just to speak on this, to provide some history, because we did the Pavement Condition Index mapping, when did we do it last?
The last report goes to 2016.
2016. So this is like the very first thing that I voted on, and the intel from this particular exercise was the basis for all kinds of streets maintenance and streets construction projects moving forward. I thought it was really scientific, frankly, as far as exactly how, and in particular, our micro-surfacing projects, the prioritization of what we were doing, I know, came a lot from it. But it's, it's neat, because a lot of times, like, people, you know, depending on who lives on a road, or depending on how loud someone can be, it's hard to actually know what is the condition of each and every road in our city. So I just remember through the years, I kept coming back to this vote from 2016 and thinking that that was money well spent. So that's on the, this particular item, but also on Councilmember Parsley's item, you know, adding a more robust user interface on the website is helpful for a lot of reasons, because number one is, as people asking us questions, if we can't point them to the answer on a website, we have to get you all involved to start answering those questions. So I know there's probably some pushback to wanting to, to really get more engaging in terms of our communication as far as what projects we're working on, when we expect to finish, why we're working on those projects. Even the Pavement Condition Index, indexing report is a great example of something that could be online, because that's a, it's a really visual report. It's very helpful for you to know where you rank. It's very helpful for you to know where you rank and what road is the best and worst, east versus west, you know, all of that. So I just want to second what council member Parsley is saying about adding more information to the website. I was thinking about also when we did the sidewalks, and people would come in with sidewalks, and it's like, well, where are you at on the queue? When are you coming to us? Back, you know, and then eventually, we got a website so that you stopped getting, and I don't know whatever happened to that, but that was very helpful. So I just, I know we're talking about two kind of different things, but they're correlated here. So those are my thoughts. Councilmember Parsley.
Part of why I wanted to bring that up is because I, you know, I know Harper mentioned that you were going to do this study, which I think it will be a great step to start, for us to know exactly what needs to be done in each road. Because I can give you the list of the roads that residents give to me, but I really don't know what the scope of work looks like. So I definitely want to see this project done and for us to know exactly what needs to be done in the roads. And I don't know if Harper has anything to add to that, but I, what I'm saying is I would like to wait for you guys to do this study in order for us to know what we want to do in each road. However, I don't know that Hayden Reich Road, which is one of the ones that I get the most complaints about.
Harper Wilder, Public Works Director. Councilmember Parsley asked us about roads that weren't on the road bonds, some like Hayden Reich, and another one would be Goforth between the Cassetta Roundabout and BB Road, which were actually in our initial plan that we provided, but it wasn't one of the roads selected for the bonds that were chosen.
Yes.
But it was one that we saw that was significantly deteriorated. My staff, she asked if my staff could do these roads, and I said yes, but the issue was that we have the same, like Leon said, we have a $500,000 street construction budget, which council recently bumped it up for us, thank goodness, to 750. So we're at 750 now. So just to give you an idea, this is my staff doing the road. This is from Goforth Road, from Cassetta Ranch, Roundabout to BB Road, which is over a mile long, 58, 25 feet times 20 foot wide. It's going to be around $1,128,000. This is our cost. Estimated contractor cost is 2.8 to 3.3 mil.
For a mile?
Just over that.
So the cost per mile in all the road bonds is 15?
Yeah.
So I'm just, I just want to be clear.
Well, I want to make sure that we're talking apples to apples because we don't do...
You're talking about the resurfacing?
Right.
Okay.
That's it. We'll reconstruct, put that surface in. We're not putting in sidewalks. We're not putting in streetlights and everything else and all the extras that are coming along. So that was just, you know, that was just Goforth Road. Hayden Reich Lane to our city limits, which is basically from 150 down to where our new wastewater treatment plant entrance is. It's going to come up to about 801, 801,000. Contractor cost is 2 million to 2.4 million was our estimated cost that we thought that they would provide. So where this is important, if you look at both of those numbers, those are both over our yearly annual budget. Right? So if we wanted to do something like this, let's say we're going to do, take on a big project like that one. We're going to come over here and we're going to do half of Hayden Reich this year, half of Hayden Reich next year. Then that takes a large majority of that yearly annual budget and limits us to the other things that we do. If you look in the past, you know, some of the areas that we've done already. Find it here real quick.
So we just have to note that we definitely need to increase your budget, and I see Perez's This is where I would like to see our money going, I mean, within reasonable expectations. I would love to see our public works budget definitely going up.
Well, we've, you know, these guys are working on roads constantly. We're constantly working on these roads. And if you look at, let me find it, I'll find it real quick. Here's some roads that we've done. We've done Windy Hill Road, 57,600 square foot. Marketplace at I-35 frontage. Hayes Street, Gonzales Street, Tower Drive, Beach Drive, Sheep Trail Drive, Kyle Parkway, Seaton Parkway. These are all areas within these roads. Hiver Circle, Stagecoach Trail, Button Creek, Martinez Loop, Cortez Street. There's a whole list here that we've worked on that my staff has built or repaired.
Mayor Protem.
I'll just add real quick, perfect example, because that way we could do, number one, when we start talking about budget for this, right? We can add or discussions during the 2324 budget, including the 2425 budget, to see where we're at. Number two, we could divide it up by sectors in the city, okay? By regions or by districts, okay? And then number three, another idea would use timelines to include streets that are going to be, to be completed or need repair or actually reconstructed. We can also include the sidewalks in any illumination that needs to be upgraded. There's a lot of lights that I could drive down, and some of it's yellow, some of it's bright white, some of it's faded blue, some of it's bright white. So just things like that could be something that, you know, we could start thinking about, like what she's saying, in the next year to include new signages, changing the old yellow ones to the red and whites like we have, and also strategically placing them like that. That way, you think it would help doing it that way versus hopping around from area to area. You could actually do one region and knock it out within a matter of three months, and then you could say, now I'm going to move on to District 2 area. We're going to hit all those points, and we're going to move to District 4 area and then utilize that. And then that way, you could have a better balance of your staff. You could say, okay, I have more guys experienced in this type of work that needs to be done over here, the sidewalks and so forth, and you could be able to budget out that way.
I think there's a lot there, what you just commented on, and some good things. You know, you made something here where you said, okay, you do the road, the sidewalk, X number of different things. If we have to curb and gutter, does it need storm drainage? All those extra things add on to our staff that's really not equipped to handle everything at once. That's more of a contractor.
And then that way, we could use that, like we said, if we need to hire them out eventually.
Right.
Like what we're saying, what Zuniga was saying about hiring a technician at the wastewater plant is something to say, hey, maybe we might want to put that on later on where we don't have to rely on these contractors that take six months to build a, whatever it is. We can train our employees and get some, it's just brainstorming, that's all I'm doing.
We can do the roads right now. The problem is, like Bunting Road, for example, let me use that, okay? If we're going to do Bunting Road, when we first listed it as a project, and if that would have been an accepted project, I'm sure Leon would have looked at, okay, does that need to be widened? You know, the existing, it's a two lane, it's narrow, we need to widen this out. Are we going to add a center turn lane down the middle? All that is more for, it's a little outside our scope because now we're looking at, okay, we need to change out water lines, existing water lines, there's existing gas lines, existing fiber lines that are running up and down Goforth. All that's going to, yeah, property acquisitions have to be involved. Now we got to look at, it's got open drainage ditch on both sides. Once we do this property acquisition, where do we put the ditch? Now we needed a more property acquisition, or are we going curb and gutter, storm drain? So now if you got to add storm sewer and storm drain and all that, now your cost just went really up into tension. So all those factor in.
Sure.
If it's something that you want us to go over, I've got a bad road. Harper, I want you to go over there and I want you to fix this road, okay? Like it is. We can do that, full depth construction, reconstruction, we can fix things like that. Much better, we're much equipped to do things like that than to do projects that involve everything that I just said a second ago, the widening, putting all the sidewalks in, doing a full, those are more for your road bond that you all talked about and picked and approved. That's more for that kind of service.
But would it be beneficial or helpful if you did divide it up by region? Like a sector of the city saying, from January through June, we're going to like really just take a look at some of these streets that maybe need it, and some of them may not. You know, there's some may still be weathered to storm, but just at least you're inspecting the roads, every single street and seeing if maybe...
We have a list already.
Okay.
We're running off a current list this year and next year. And this is divided between milling overlay and chip seal. So we've already done chip seal roads as well.
Okay, good. Thanks, Harper. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Floris Cale.
Sorry. Well, she was going to make a motion, but you haven't had it for yet.
Yeah, I'm trying to gather as much information as I can here. So it looks like agenda item number 29 is for Leon to obtain information from a consulting firm to get a comprehensive street pavement evaluation and infrastructure assessment. So is that going to be for the whole city?
Yes, except we're not including tech stop roads or the road bond roads that are in there.
Okay, okay. So to me, that seems like a really great idea. I don't, I guess I'm trying to figure out how the two agenda items kind of combine to base one off the other because I guess we don't really understand how we would do 41 or how we could start any work unless we have an assessment.
Well, I wanted to bring up 41 since I wanted to talk about road repairs, and then I saw Leon had 29, so I figured that, you know, talking about road repairs, then we may as well just go ahead and wait for that assessment that you're bringing in order for us to establish what repairs need to happen.
So if I could, we already have our marching orders. We have our list of roadways that we're already doing. What this assessment will do will help us for after this is done in next year, okay, now we're looking at this and, okay, what do we need to plug in? Which may be some of the same roads, but at least we'll have a proper assessment to be able to tell that for sure.
Okay, so that is exactly what I needed to know because budget season is upon us. And so in order to prepare for next year, and how long does this, how long does this take, Leon? I thought, I know I read a date in here, but this is, how long will the report take? Will we have it before the end of budget?
We should have the deliverables by August of this year.
August. We're talking about like a month between August and September. But I mean, if we put this off one day longer, it could really cut into not being able to put these streets into the budget. Is that correct?
We really need to get started now because this time of the year is when we need to start looking at those roads because those are when the cracks are the biggest in the roads during the winter. So we need to measure that now as quickly as we can. And it takes some time to go through their quality control and assess everything. They're going to give us an initial report. We're going to look at it, and we're going to look at some of the roads that they've determined are in great shape or bad shape or whatever, and we're going to say, well, we don't really agree with this one. Can you explain why this one is so good or so bad? So we're going to do a quality control of our own when we get the report back. And then they're going to be presenting a report to council on their recommendations. And one of the things they're going to recommend as part of that report is what kind of resurfacing or what kind of construction they're going to recommend for those roads.
Okay, so I'm, that's a great idea. Like, I'm really nervous about even starting this leak. And so I would like to make a motion to approve agenda item number 29 and incorporate agenda item number 41 so the city prepares a website that will help keep the residents updated on the roads that the city's going to work on.
Second.
All right. Motion by Councilmember Floris Cale, seconded by Councilmember Zuniga, that we approved agenda number 29 and incorporate Councilmember Parsley's item regarding website into the deliverable, into the deliverable so that it's coming, something's coming back.
Correct. Yeah, one will follow the other.
Okay. Is there discussion on that motion, Councilmember Parsley?
So I wanted to add to that because I don't, and I think that this might be a little different, maybe to look into options of possible repairs for the tract of Goforth and Hayden Reich to see if that will, I don't know if that assessment will help for this road and what will need to happen in order for us to repair it. But what I, I didn't want a separate website. What I was thinking about was getting in the city of Kyle Page to have an additional tab on the top, as you said, residents and business and something that says roads, potholes, maybe roads where you can have potholes, repairs possibly have a timeline of what we're working on roadwise. I mean, I didn't need a separate website, but just a separate tab in the website. That's all. Which might be a lot easier, just to add a page than to add a new website.
Can we talk about that, like, when the time comes to prepare that page? I think as long as we are in agreement that we want to see the two, that we don't have to talk details until it gets further down the road because it looks like what you need right now is agenda item number 29. And then from agenda number 29, then we can add or incorporate agenda item 41, but we can't do 41 without 29. Is that correct?
Well, that would be...
We could, but that would involve that Harper and I need to go check on the roads real quick.
Right. Yep.
So, well, I just want to say, my thoughts are, when it comes to building a non, like a road bonds page and a non-road bonds page, in my opinion, we need to be building something for the long term. Like a real platform that can be used, that will last from budget year to budget year as projects come on and go off, like something that's really, that, in my mind, that's what, that's what I'm hearing that we're trying to propose. So I want us to pursue that, but I almost see that, I don't exactly know the mechanics of how we would build and fund some kind of platform that would allow for people to, anytime that there are questions about when, you know, roads, just in general, that that would be a source, a singular source of information. So it's, but I think the motion's on the right track. But I'm just, I kind of want to just make that point of like, it's not just about this budget year with the website thing. It's really more of a communications thing, but it's going to take investment, and it's going to take some time to put that together. It's going to take support from staff to populate the data, but...
So Rachel Sonier, Communications Director, for the record. I did want to point out that we do have a projects module on our website that's currently active, and it's how we disseminate traffic alerts at this time. The only thing it doesn't incorporate is potholes or things of that nature. So if we could look at a way of editing the project modules to include those sorts of things, we do already have something that lets people know about road closures, lane closures, ongoing projects in the city, including road projects as well as parks projects, things of that. And it's on our homepage. If you go to cityofkyle.com罡ex, that's where it is. But also, if you're on the homepage, there's a gray button at the bottom in the far right corner, I want to say, that goes to that. And it has a kind of simplistic map, to be honest, of roads that are currently being worked on. It also includes Hayes County projects because those affect Kyle residents, you know, just as much as City Kyle projects do, as well as tech stop projects. So I currently don't get data about anything for, you know, pothole repairs or anything of that nature, but if we could find a way to incorporate that data to that, I think that might be a good jumping point for us.
Yeah. So just to be clear on the motion, I want to make sure Leon's clear on this as well. The motion that incorporates that website, that task has nothing to do with KCI's task. So they're not, because we're talking about website and public relations, you're clear that the contractor's not tasked with that. They have the specific engineering function, right?
Understood.
Okay, all right. Is there discussion, further discussion on the motion? I think we'll keep having this discussion through the months. I think maybe we'll come up with something. All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, 720. Okay, at this point, we're down to, my intention is to try to have us be done at midnight no matter what. So I just want to be clear so that we don't just run out of roadway. We have agenda items 30, 31, and 33. It looks like those are the last remaining sort of staff items. Then we have 40, 42, 43, 45, and 46, which are more council items. Plus, we still have two executive session items. So there's 0% chance that we're going to finish all those items in 50 minutes. I'm opening suggestions as far as how y'all want to handle all this.
I can postpone mine.
Mayor, I could postpone 40 till next meeting, please.
All right, so that's, you said 40?
Yes.
And you said, Councilmember Zuniga, 45?
I can postpone 45.
Councilmember Floris Cale?
I would like to discuss the fire department. He's been waiting here patiently. I would like to discuss the fire department. He's been waiting here patiently. So I would like to discuss that.
Chief here.
Yeah, chief is here.
All right, we've got Sean Bergen Polk and CPNY. So right now, it's, and the rules of council item that I wanna propose, I'd like for it to be brief. So I just wanna propose a very simple amendment there. So I'd like to keep that one, but, so what about 42?
I can postpone 42. I'm, I'm getting more information on it.
Mine can wait till the next meetings. It's just, item 40.
Okay, and then I think the discussion on reinvestment zone number four can also wait, but maybe not light bright. Maybe light bright needs to happen at this meeting. So as far as, so right now, in the, in the 50 minutes, we're talking about light bright. We're talking about the fire department. And rules of council.
Are you in 31 or no?
Yes, and then 30 and 31, those are the last staff items.
For 33.
And 33, yes. All right, you think we can handle all those? Let's try to be judicious. Let's try to get through all, all of this.
I'm gonna be fast.
All right, next up is agenda item number 30. Consider adoption of recommendations from the preliminary engineering report issued by CPNY for intersection improvements on Coler's Crossing, Sanders, Benner, and Cromwell Streets. And to consider approval to begin design services for the construction roundabouts at the same three intersections. And Mr. Barber's gonna have a report, and then I have a couple things that I wanna say about this and then request that we take no action, but go ahead.
Mayor and council, back in May, you approved a contract with CPNY to look at those three specific intersections, Cromwell, Benner, and Sanders. And the initial intent was to look at the feasibility of, does it meet warrants for traffic signal? And it does meet warrants. All three intersections meet warrants for installation of traffic signals. In the report, which is pretty lengthy, I don't know if you had a chance to read all 174 pages, but it, it, the summary is, and, Grant, do I have my little table 16? I pulled out table 16. That's really where the, we need to make a decision on. Because what, what that shows is the different cost for either a roundabout or, or a traffic signal. The consultant is recommending roundabouts in that particular intersection for all three of those intersections. Even gives us the idea of we should build Sanders first, then look at Cromwell, then Benner at, at, by 2028, if I remember correctly. John Dean is here tonight if we need to ask many specific questions on details, so. But anyway, I just wanna let you know, that's the question right now, is on table 16. We're talking about an expense of either around a half million for traffic signals or around 3.8 for roundabouts. Do you wanna point out that those are construction cost only? They do not include surveying, design, project management, geotechnical testing, surveying. Any of that is not included in that. So you probably need to round that up to about five to six million dollars when you get through with the, with the numbers.
Okay.
To build those roundabouts.
So, thank you, Leon. And my recommendation is gonna be that we just, I don't know if it's accept the results, but not make a decision on that. And the reason is, is because I don't, I think it's pretty clear that, that in all of our CIPs that we're trying, that we don't necessarily have the funding in the general fund to fund these kind of projects. That being said, what we are working on is an agreement with the county to allow for the TERS, to issue TERS revenue bonds. And there, I believe there would be capacity to put together a program, not only to repay Heroes Memorial Park and La Verde on a, on an amortization, because that's an IOU that is, is coming forward. Not only to fund the maintenance and operation, not only to fund the retail roads agreement, the eight million dollars for the retail roads, but also to start design and construction and fund the, these, these roundabouts. So there's a plan that, that staff would like to bring forward. Our financial advisor has, has said that, that can come forward. But none of it happens unless the county agrees to, number one, extend the life of TERS number two, to allow for 30-year TERS revenue bonds to be issued. And also allow for the county's revenues to be realized within the TERS as opposed to the current form, which is an ILA, and you can't borrow against that. So the TERS two was designed to put together projects like this. And I believe that the round, I personally believe the roundabouts and concur with the results would be, but for the cost, would be really, really good for Coler's. But we can't really even make that decision until we get through the TERS conversations with the county, which is imminent. And because this is a situ, this is something that we don't have to make the decision on immediately. What I'd like to do is wait, and so then we can even know if TERS funding is an option. Because if it's not, we're not gonna be able to do 15 million in roundabouts. Councilmember Floris Cale?
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I'm not interested in adopting any of this right now. I think we need to figure out if we want the roundabout or if we want the stoplight. I even had a resident, maybe say a pedestrian walkway, which I, I don't know. I mean, I don't know if we could do two stoplights and a pedestrian walkway. I think that might-
The, the funding that we're proposing to be able to generate would pay for the roundabouts designed to a pedestrian-first standard. We're also talking about potentially removing the lights, the, the poles on Coler's as well as installing sidewalks on both sides. So it would become a, sort of an iconic street from a pedestrian standpoint and from a vehicular traffic standpoint. We wouldn't have to issue, spend any money, zero, out of the, the general fund. The TERS would be able to support the design, the engineering, and the construction of the whole thing. But again, it can't happen until, and those conversations with the county are ongoing. So I also wanna wait until we know, because otherwise, we need to just put the signals in.
Should we postpone to a date, or?
I, I wouldn't because we're waiting on the county.
Okay.
You know, so we wanna give them the ability to, we're, we're, we're gonna be on their next executive session to discuss the amendments to the TERS that we were asking them to make. So I would like to just accept the results, if you want us to vote to accept the results. But either way, understand that it will come back one way or the other. I drive Sanders every day. I've seen wrecks firsthand there. The, I, I hear people complain about intersections all over town. This is mine to complain about. It's very dangerous. I will not let it drop. Councilmember Zuniga?
Because it, because it is dangerous and there's pedestrians and potentially kids and people walking there, I'm just not a big fan of roundabouts. And there's three of them here. So I think it actually looks prettier when you have crosswalks with lights. But that's just my, my opinion on it.
I, I know. And I, we, we have a policy that is roundabouts first. This council has never been unanimous in its position on roundabouts. I am a, I, I, I love them and I can't even begin to tell you how much.
They fit in certain places.
Yes, and they fit on Coler's very, very much. From an engineering standpoint, they fit on Coler's. But we're gonna have to let that be proven out. I would just, will say, as much as I've talked about roundabouts through the years, in seven years, as much as I've talked about them, I have, we have not paid for one roundabout in my entire time. So I'm just asking to give me a little bit of time to try to see if we can come up with a plan to fund these outside of the general fund. If we can't, then we don't even have to have the debate.
All right.
Councilmember Floris Cale?
I agree.
Yeah, and I'd just like to make a motion to postpone agenda item number 30.
All right, motion made by Councilmember Floris Cale, seconded by Mayor Protem that we postpone agenda item number 30. There's discussion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. All right, next up is agenda item 31. Approve a resolution authorizing the interim city manager to negotiate an agreement with Sean Bergen Polk to provide planning and design services for the implementation of the city's Vibe Trail system network. Mr. Barber?
Mayor and council, we went through an RFQ process to make the selection of Sean Bergen Polk. I believe there was six submittals on this. And we are recommending Sean Bergen Polk to be the lead designer for the Vibe Trail. We do have some other projects that are maybe scheduled in the near future for improvements or installations of the Vibe. So that's the reason that we wanted to get somebody set in place to be our lead designer for that.
Councilmember Floris Cale?
Yeah, I guess my only concern is, there was a contract about a year ago and they were supposed to prepare a study and a report. And we haven't received that yet. So are they gonna do it at the same time? I guess is my question, because we're going on a, on a solid year. So I just wanna make sure if we're gonna do this Vibe, that we're gonna do this Vibe.
Councilmember, I wasn't involved in that particular transaction, so I would have to defer to Alan Ross, who's here. He's with Sean Bergen Polk. He may have submitted something to the Parks Department or someone.
Okay.
I'm Alan Ross with Sean Bergen Polk Consulting Engineers. Councilperson Floris Cale, to answer your specific question about the study and report for Plum Creek. That is a study and report from I-35 down to Water Leaf Park. We're approximately 70% complete with that study. I wanna point out that in the time that, from the time that we took that contract on, I think about last February, we've assisted the city with five grant applications and a pedestrian crossing over Union Pacific Railroad. So we, we've had our attention diverted a little bit. We're, we're still making progress and plan to submit that report soon.
Okay, with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve agenda item number 31.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Floris Cale, seconded by Mayor Protem to be asked that we approve agenda item 31. Is there discussion on the motion? Councilmember Zuniga?
Yes, sir. So my question was, what experience do you have with the planning of a Vibe Trail? A natural trail? Because I'm getting a lot of concerned residents that enjoy the bike trails that they're seeing a lot, very heavy on, on cement, cement roads.
Right.
To, to drive electric vehicles and golf carts.
Right.
So where, what, what exactly are you doing in the design for this whole trail system?
Okay. Well, the Vibe Trail system itself is intended to be a 12-foot-wide concrete multi-use path. I mean, there's 80 miles of it planned in the city, okay? So to answer your question, Sean Bergen, our specific experience with projects like this is we've done over 35 miles of urban trails in the Dallas-Fort Worth area, in, in east Texas areas like Tyler and Beaumont, down to Houston, so on and so forth. We've got, definitely have the experience with wide, concrete, multi-use urban trails. And, and so when you say multi-use, that's everything from hikers, bikers, what they call micro-transportation, like rollerblading or roller skating, and including small, usually electric motorized vehicles as well. We've not done anything, we've not done anything with like ATVs or four-wheelers or anything like that, but that's not what the Vibe Trail is all about. So did, did I answer your question, sir?
Yes, so, so how has it worked, like in other areas that you planned it? How, what's been the, the feedback? I mean, the community really, really enjoyed the Vibe? The, the trail system that you guys designed, or?
Yeah, the, I mean, the Vibe is unique to Kyle, Texas. And, and in fact, there's not another trail like it that I know of in the whole state of Texas where it incorporates all those transportation modes, including motorized vehicles, okay? But if, if you're asking what's been the response to any trail project we've ever been involved with, it's always positive. It's always the, I mean, it is a quality of life project.
So Alan, I wanna redirect you to, back to what Councilmember Zuniga, I think, is, is asking. He's, he's trying to figure out, are we, are we still doing
Natural, natural around the creek.
So there's the Vibe, which is one, but then we also have our Plum Creek Natural Trail. And you were tasked with a portion of that, and you're 70% complete, I believe, on that section. But is there a natural component to it? And then also, are we doing more for natural trails outside of just this particular project?
So as a part of our Plum Creek study and report, we are, we were asked to assess the city's existing natural trails, which we've done. I personally have walked every foot of natural trail that you have in Kyle, Texas. That's a part of our report, okay? We weren't asked, as a part of our scope of work, for Plum Creek to, to look at any new natural trails. Only to assess what you have currently.
But in, in that process, you're going to make recommendations for ways to improve the natural trail.
Oh, absolutely.
Just to be clear, we have $4 million, so this last year hasn't, wasn't wasted. For that particular section, we got $4 million. And a lot of those funds are, and I believe Commissioner Inglesby at the time also was very committed to making sure that we're improving the natural trail in that area with, which is one of your other items, ironically. But it's better trailheads, better, you know, walking paths.
Viewing platforms.
Yeah, crossings of the, the creek and all of that, which I also really wanna make sure that we're spending that $4 million on those things for that trail. Because that was the original, that's originally what we took to the voters was a big improvement to the natural trail of that area. And the Vibe was a part of that, but that's not the focus. So I know you're at 70%. This is a good time to say it. I've said it to you two or three times, and we've said it on the record. I think we've even taken a motion, but I don't know exactly where we stand. But I do wanna make sure that, that we're improving the natural trail area as a part of this project scope, which is not what we're actually voting on now, just to be clear.
Yes, sir. I understand that. And we, we understand that addressing the existing natural trail system that you have is part of our scope on the Plum Creek study and report, and, and it is being addressed.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other discussion?
I think it was addressed on that, because being on the Vibe Trail Task Force. And I remember you were out there with us at Frisco, and it was like 20 degrees. But you went out there and to see, kinda, to show, it was cold that day. But thank you for driving all the way out there to kinda show us that, that trail. And so that shows right there the dedication that you were gonna give to our city. And, and just to make the points, what Mayor and Mr. Zuniga are saying is that that's what we wanna make sure we do, is keep the, as much of the, the natural trail as possible. So I'm, I'm excited. I'm ready for this to keep going.
All right, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, Alan. Appreciate it. All right, next up, agenda item 33. First reading and ordinance of the City of Kyle, Texas authorizing the city secretary to terminate campaign treasure appointments of inactive candidates and inactive political committees. Ms. Kirkland?
This item is to allow for me to bring forward candidate treasure appointments that are stale. So a lot of people, or even committees, political committees, they'll open up a campaign treasure appointment, and then after the election is over, they fail to ever file another campaign finance report again. And then I'm left with those open for, for forever.
Does anybody have any questions or comments?
I guess what would happen if we don't, if you don't do this?
I just have to keep these papers for, forever.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve agenda item number 33?
Second.
All right, motion by Councilmember Floris Cale, seconded by Councilmember Tobias, that we approve agenda item 33. Wait for a second. All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion carries seven to zero. Is there any objection to this being finally passed? Seeing none, it's finally passed. That's what that was for. Thank you. Appreciate it. I'm trying to keep the next agenda from being 48 items long. Yeah, I know. You're fine. You're good. Go back. All right. All right, next up, agenda item 43. Discussion on possible direction to allow staff to work with Kyle Fire Department to discuss the potential relocation of Kyle Fire Department Station 1 located at 210 West Moore Street.
All right, thank you. If you wanna come up here, chief. Before we even get started, I just wanna say, I am not trying to kick anybody out. This was a conversation between me and the chief. When I was talking to him about Woodmere, the, this guy, you know, we talked little by little about the downtown. He, the, the fire department is not necessarily comfortable with being in the area that they're currently in. And so I thought maybe we could direct staff to have a conversation with them, maybe to relocate them or to do some, help them find a new place somehow. And, and in that, if it happens to be, we swap or we buy or something along the way, that, that comes along. But I, I first of all want permission from council, first of all, say yes or no if we wanna do this. And then if so, then we'll have staff figure out what that looks like.
I have, I just have one question, and it is, if we, let's say we could find the, the financial solution, which is a big if, but it's, it's always possible. Because I've heard, I actually heard a couple staff members kinda excited about the prospect, and we'll see. If we could find it, in your mind, what would the, what would we use the, the fire station, which we would inherit, for? Generally speaking, what are your thoughts?
I mean, you're talking about a restaurant or some retail or anything that, that we could, you know, get some kind of tourism and tax money from. I think those two are the big things that we need in the downtown. And let's be honest, that fire station is gorgeous. And so I think there's a lot of possibilities, if, if this were to happen, that we could discuss. I mean, again, that has to be a council decision, but I am not, I would like to use it in some sort of capacity, whatever council sees fit. I don't have any specific plans. It was just, I, when he said that they weren't happy there, I hopped on it and said, let's see what we can do as far as working together to relocate and then, and then see what comes from there.
And so, and your request right now is just to say, we like the idea. We'd like to see what you could bring back as far as something tangible, one way it could be done, right?
Absolutely. And if you come back and it's nothing, or staff comes back and they said, there's nothing we can do, then that's, that's okay too.
Discussion on the, on the idea? Mayor Protem?
Chief Taylor, if you could just address, what are the major dislikes that you have about downtown? So that way, the residents that are hearing this saying, from best Floris Cale saying, you guys don't wanna be here anymore, that, that would probably scare a little people saying, wow, the fire department wants to leave Kyle.
Right.
To relocate, after they just got finished building that beautiful building less than, what, 15 years ago?
So for the record, Kyle Taylor, Fire Chief, Hayes County EST 5, and served the city of Kyle as well. So when I met with Councilmember Floris Kell, and I've also met with Amber and Jerry on this in some capacity, it was different types of meetings, but it all ended up the same place. When Kyle was a town of 1,000 people, you always build the fires, the volunteer fire station in the middle of town, so you can serve the people. Well, as this town has exploded east, west, north, everywhere, it's changed to the point where we're about to build Station 4 in Green Pastures. Station 5, we're trying to decide, does it go east or west? Because I've got 12,000 houses coming down at Yarlington and 21 in that area, and I've also got Six Creek coming in west, which could, has a new commercial district and everything else. So as we're looking at that, once we build those two stations, this station's not going to do anything. It's in the totally wrong spot. At the time it was built, it was in the right spot. It was a little bitty town. So our goal would be to move this station east, 150 East area. That way, when we do get to the commercial districts in Six Creeks, we have the five stations serving, or six stations serve in the area equally, instead of this station sitting here, not running any calls. And right now, 70% of the calls that this station runs goes across that railroad track.
70%?
70% goes east.
Across the railroad.
Yeah.
So we're about on 150 area. Is that an area that you would be, that your department would be ideally looking at in that area?
Somewhere-
Off of 150?
Public Works, maybe a half, but within a half mile, mile of Public Works. Because if we get too far out, then we're still coming back into town, but somewhere in that area.
More out, more towards residential area, not so much the centralized area. I call it, I call it east central.
Yeah.
Where I'm at.
Easy access to 35 is important.
Because it's by the hospital, it's by Walmart, it's all that area. It's east Kyle, but more centralized.
Right, yes. So that's just kind of where all this came from, and it was different conversations that all led to, man, this station's in the wrong place.
Thank you. Thank you for your explanation. Thank you.
Councilor Zuniga.
Thank you, Chief, for what you said. I think that that makes a lot of good sense. I would also like to say, maybe we could use the fire station as an animal shelter for Kyle. Just putting it out there. I mean, helps our, helps everybody. Helps, we're all one city, right?
Yes. Nope.
Well, I guess we're not one city.
That is way beyond our ability right now.
I'm going to make a motion. It's good, unless you want to do it, because it's-
Yeah, I would love to make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number 43.
All right, motion by Councilor Floris Kell, seconded by Councilmember Parsley, we approve Agenda Item 43 as written. The direction is to provide staff with, to work with the fire department to discuss potential relocation. Is there a discussion on that motion? Mayor Protem.
One last question. Does your entire department support this measure?
For the most part, I believe they do.
EMS, everybody that's-
Yes.
With, that's within your organization-
Yes, sir. We've had these discussions about station placement, just because of the growth. We've just, it's a constant discussion, and actually moving this station does solve a problem with.
Well, all I know is not all the calls go east.
Oh, no, not all.
You also provide EMT services.
But your call came out of Mountain City.
Did it really?
Yes.
Did y'all also bring EMT services with the fire station? Don't y'all, y'all are combined?
All right.
Yes.
Wait, can I, can I say, I did not, like, I'm not doing this just to get on the east side. I'm just relocating. If it doesn't work out off of 150 or on the east, I'm okay with that, too. I want staff to understand that. There is no specific plan. There was no, like-
It's a long shot for us, because essentially, we're acquiring a multimillion-dollar facility when we're kind of, we're kind of facility and property poor right now, you know? So we're making, well, not necessarily, but it's a big, it's a big bite. It's a big piece to-
Prices now are-
We're assuming in the plan that the corner lot is a part of that, right?
Yes.
All right. Well, I'm definitely open to exploring it then. I've been talking to Chief about that for seven years.
Yes. And the prices right now are crazy.
Yeah.
We're just trying to get Station 4 built, and it's a nightmare.
I understand. All right, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Nay.
All right, motion carries six to one.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is Agenda Item 46, correct? All right, consider amending the rules of council. So it was, it was brought up that there was a question about whether or not the special meeting, that is, the executive session ahead of this meeting constitutes a separate meeting, which would allow, based on the rules of council, for us to, for a council member to have up to three items for exec, and then three items for the regular meeting. I do think technically, you could make that argument, even though I'm not sure that that's really the intention. So I wanted us to clarify that now, and say that when it comes to an agenda that is a council agenda for a regular meeting, whether the, whether the executive session is posted as a separate meeting, because it's a logistical timing question, or whether it's posted at the end and there's just one, the intention of the rules of council is for each council member to be able to post up to three items. And so I wanted to make a recommendation that we just clarify that, so that there's no longer ambiguity, unless the council does want to allow for three executive and three regular meeting items for every council meeting. My motion is, I'd like to make a motion, and it is to amend the rules of council, to clarify that, that on the first and third Tuesday, on our regular meeting, whether it is a special or a regular meeting, posted as two or one, that the combination of that is the limit for three items per council member.
Second.
Motion by Mayor, seconded by Mayor Protem. Is there discussion on that motion? Councilor Floris Kell.
Well, so my thought is, it's a different agenda, it's a different meeting. In fact, we have to stop the video and restart it over because it's all different. Now, do I think there should be six? No. But I think providing maybe one for executive, and then three for regular, I would be okay with that, too. But the truth of the matter is, we've amended these rules more in the last 12 months than we did probably all the times added up before.
Oh, you don't know about some of the rules of council battles and all the changes. It's been amended probably 15 times in seven years.
Well, okay, it wasn't even amended the first, it didn't even come in 2021. We didn't even see it. There was no changes to it. So whatever rules you guys are going to make, I will abide by. We just got to stop changing them, because there's just so much.
Well, but this is, you're, but sometimes, when, when you press on the rules, it, it shows that there are always ways that you can clarify, and you have to, because if, if the rules get pressed on, we have to have an answer for it. That's the reason why we're amending this, for no other reason, is to, is to provide that clarity. Now, as it relates to the reconsideration and rescinding, I intend to look into that and bring it back as a proposal at a later date. But, you know, I haven't had a chance to process what happened with all of that, so, yeah, clearly, I missed it. All right, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. All right, next up is executive session. We're just going to do Project Light Bright. I'll read, I'll read us in. Pursuant to Chapter 551 of Texas Government Code, City Council reserves the right to convene into executive session from time to time, if deemed necessary during this meeting. City Council may convene into executive session pursuant to any lawful exception contained in Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, including any or all of following topics. Convene into executive session pursuant to Section 551.087 Texas Government Code to deliberate regarding the offer of economic incentives to one or more business prospects that the city seeks to have stay, locate, or expand in or near the city, Project Light Bright. All right, we're in exec. Thank you. Call this meeting back to order at times 11:52. There was no action taken during the executive session. There may be action taken now. Bo, do you want to come up for a second? So I believe we presented you with an offer. I believe you're trying to counter. I'm not interested personally in a counter, so we're kind of ready to either sort of take it or leave a deal. So we want to give you that chance, and then we're going to adjourn, or we'll do the deal.
So what is the deal you're wanting to do with now?